Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, May 7th, School Board meeting. And we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Cash, would you do us a favor?
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Buenas tardes. Rafael Santana, if there's anyone that needs a translation in Spanish, por favor, they can ask us. We also have headsets for the hearing impaired available.
And I don't believe we have any general public comment at this time. So we will actually move to our conference agenda. And the first item on our agenda is report on assessment district facilities. And I believe we have Mr. --
I'm going to start.
Okay, Dr. Cash.
So I want to just quickly make kind of some opening comments about why things are arranged the way they are, kind of the process that we, I hope that we engage in this afternoon. Thought it would be a good start to have Mr. Hetjank and Mr. Coltrip go through the large assessment that they've done of our facilities. And then based upon that assessment, have a conversation, a presentation by our staff on what we would consider to be our first list of priority projects if the board were to authorize the sale of additional bonds. And then because we will have discussed that, I would speak briefly on what the unfunded projects would be if the resolutions were not passed. Then move directly to the action agenda where the resolutions for authorizing the sale of additional bonds would be presented. And then go through, again, perhaps for a shorter period of time, the list of priorities that we would be recommending based upon the board's approval of the resolutions for both measures Q and R. And that was the process. And then we had a couple of additional items that we put on the agenda that needed to be addressed prior to our May 14th Board meeting. So with that, would invite Dave Hetjank and Kelly Coltrip to come forward and begin their presentation on the assessment of our facilities.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Madam President, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the board for allowing us to do this assessment. This is a tool that many school districts don't have the luxury of having. A comprehensive assessment of the state of all your facilities so you can make good planning decisions, good decisions about where you need to go with the roadmap as far as what needs to be addressed, what is in good shape, what is in mild shape, what is in bad shape. And like I say, it's a great tool to have to reference and I'm sure that many districts wish they had this when they're making decisions, especially about capital projects. I'm going to turn it over to Kelly. Kelly is the author of the document, and the author of the document is always the best one to go through and explain what's in it and how to go through it. But it's divided into sections, and each of these goes through by the school, giving categories. And then at the end, we have a couple of examples we'd like to go through of how to take this document and relate it to backup material. So we picked a couple of projects to go through and show you. But for the most part, I'll let Kelly go ahead and start this part of the presentation, unless you have any questions of me.
Hi. Thank you, David. You're Dr. Cash, President Lamone, board members. Thanks again for having us here today. So I want to make everyone aware, there are extra copies of the booklet. If you didn't get one, if you'd like to follow along, there are some on the table over there behind the camera. And as you go through the booklet, as Mr. Hetjank said, it's divided into three main portions. The first is, it's in here, in this coil-bound booklet, which you hopefully have all received. And it's an executive summary. It's a discussion of where you are financially, a financial reconciliation, a little bit of accounting check that is in there. And it double-checks some numbers that are coming in from your Fiscal Services Department and from your Citizens Oversight Committee consultants. And then some recommendations for projects and a tabulation of all of the site project assessments. I'll get into what some of those terms mean as I go along, site project assessment and reconciliation, those kind of things. The second part and the third part are contained in these binders, such as Mr. Hetjank has on his desk here. Now, since you all don't want to carry those around, I provided a CD in the booklet, which hopefully you've all found and didn't have too much trouble navigating through, to make it easy to follow along. In those CDs, the first, on the CD, the first booklet, the larger of the two is, excuse me, it'll be probably my daughter calling. The first of the two is for the secondary schools and all of the individual site project assessments that were done. And the second of the two, which is the Part III binder, has got the elementary schools. And it has a matrix for your roofs and your asphalt surfaces, which are an introductory into the systems assessment that we'll be continuing with in our task two. So right on into the booklet here then. Dave, if you can scroll down, there's a table of contents, and just keep going in the executive summary. Hopefully you've read that. It sort of just gives you the big picture look of where you are. And if you can stop right up a little bit, half a page, right there, the findings and recommendations portion, which is going to be in a tab. It's a tab called Executive Summary, and that's on the first page of the Executive Summary tab. Discusses what we did and the fact that this report is current through the board actions that were taken on the April 9th meeting, when you approved proceeding forward with some Measure Q projects. And we held off and wanted to take another look at some of the Measure R projects. So those items have been factored into this report. Based on that, on the findings and recommendations, we see an overall need that in addition to the funds that your voter approved to spend on secondary schools Measure Q, around $225 million, and then around $130 million on what we measure R, your elementary schools. And there's a little bit more discussion of the process and how it went. The second page of that, Dave, if you could go along, is our some overall recommendations, which hopefully you've all read by now. By the way, any of these things as we're going, just stop me. And we'll stop, we'll stop on the recommendations. And then it goes on just to tell you what's in the sections here. So Dave, if you can keep going and get us to Section 1. I'll try and breeze through this pretty fast. Okay, there we go. We can go back to that one. So this is, this is the summary for Measure Q. And I've taken it as on an income and expense, you know, basic accounting, generally accepted accounting principles format here. And it arrives, it shows you how we sort of arrive at the same numbers. And if you'll go down just a little further, David, to where you'll find the projected shortfall is, is a summary of what you spent so far versus what you, what's coming, what's contained in all those reports, and what funds you can raise or authorized to raise under the original voter-approved maximums. You'll find, you'll find a Measure Q summary tabbed in your booklet. And a little bit later on, you'll find a Measure R summary that's identical for it. But of course, it's, the numbers are specific to Measure R. Then moving on, in the next portion, next tab, Attachment Q1, and this is a list of all your expenditures and encumbrances, and they are current through January 31st. Those are the numbers that were presented by your Citizens Oversight Committee auditing company, Spectrum Management Solutions. I went through and did a cross audit of them, found out they're very, very, very close on everything, as far as I can tell. So this is, this is a summary of what you've spent to date. And the next tab, Q2, is Attachment Q2. There's a list that's total by site, and these tabulate the numbers that were on the list that I received of possible Measure Q projects. There's, of course, there's an Attachment R2 for Measure R. Now, understanding that there was a list of potential projects or, you know, possible projects going into this assessment, we understand that that's going to change a little bit as we get a little farther on the discussion this evening, because there were some things that were found out. And I'll, I'll show you where they are in the booklet here in just a few moments. So if you wanted to look at these individually, there's a summary, and then there's a by school, then I've broken up the projects by list. And then moving through the next one, which is Q3, Tab Q3, these are project expenses that were not on that initial Measure Q list. And of course, there's a, there's a R3 also, which backs up the numbers on, for Measure R. And this is broken down by some broad categories. If you have any questions about them, just let me know. Portable classroom replacements, they were discussed, but they weren't on the list specifically. So we went ahead and tabulated some, some possible replacement costs for the portable classroom buildings. And did that on a, on a by-site basis, a little further down in this attachment. It's an 11-page attachment, so I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, other than to give you the summary. I mentioned earlier, we had looked at some additional asphalt surfaces and paving that were not specifically on the Measure Q list. And same thing with some roofs, and assessed every bit of those in the whole district, those two categories. And so those are, those are the other categories that are accounted for, and these do tie back to the Measure Q summary. Questions so far on the, on the way this, the way this goes? So if we can just go through, David, you'll probably go through 11 pages of this, and you'll come to Measure R in a few moments. There we go. So the first page in Measure R is, again, it's a reconciliation summary. And you can see this is, this matches the numbers that are on the executive summary. I'm assuming we don't want to drill down into this right now, we're just talking, talking through how to use this. Okay, so why do I have it organized like this? It's so that you can quickly see, you know, what the overall picture of things is. And then if you want to drill down and get down into the specific detail, why it's on the attachments, and then it's in the two binders. So finally, I just want to point out, there is a tab here, there is a possible fund utilization tab, it's Tab 2.1. This was done preliminarily to the facilities meeting that we had, or the meeting that we had on the, with the school board on the 9th of April. This was, I already had this printed at the time, updated some dates on it, and you can see it's 3/27. The list that you are going to be looking at tonight is, is sort of a re-tabulation of this with some, some different things in here. But this is really only historical, as well as 2.2. This is a list of the first list of the projects we received. It's only for historical reference. It's not for any, for anything going forward. Okay, so that's the end of Section 1. Mr. Hetjank?
Right. At the end of this attachment, we're going to want to go through and talk about our other priorities. But I did want to say that once we get into talking about our priorities, I'd like us to think about the matrix that we once had with the X's and all the categories on top and all the things we've done previously. And once we get through these, kind of make those the past and talk about the present. We're looking for priorities right now on how we want to spend funds that are on hand, funds that may be available to us in the future. And we have possible project lists, we have probable lists, we have lists that are a type of priority depending on how many boxes they hit of different categories. And those were all good guidance methods for helping determine what we bring forward to the board next. But I think now with this assessment and with this workshop, we'll be able to establish some firm priorities and have one list and then always refer back to that list. And, and that's our goal. And so with that, I'm going to ask Kelly to go through two projects that we selected and just show you real quickly on, on how we got to those. And if it gets too time-consuming, we can shorten that up real quick and go through it very quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Hetjank. I'm not sure where we are in our 30 minutes, so what are we, down to about 10? Something like that?
About 15.
Oh, good. You can just, just let me know. So then, I put together just a few representative projects to show you through, if we may. And we took one from the senior, the senior high school district and one from the elementary. The La Colina Junior High School roof replacement was on the Measure Q list, and, however, it was only limited to the 500 building on the list. And of course, we went out and looked at all the roofs. So David, you could scroll down, please, to maybe a little higher up. I want to show you that in, for each, for each site, just a little higher, please. Want to read the top of the page. There's a, there's a site assessment summary where I've taken all the different projects that are listed, or either listed on the Measure Q list, or for which your fiscal services has already assigned some cost. So in the left, on the left-hand column there, down in the body of the management code, that means that that's a job number you're tracking costs to internally with your fiscal services department. Some of the projects are completed, you can see on the right, and then some are, are in progress. And then some are, for example, the intercom, that you have, you have costs, if you have a number in the left-hand column, you know you've incurred some cost. In this case, it's some design. And you see there's a budgetary estimate or projected cost, and then design is on hold for that. Down at the bottom, the roof replacement, you recall at the April 9th Board meeting, there was a budget approved for an initial first phase at La Colina of $1,100,000. So David, you, Mr. Hetjank, you can go down to the next page, please. This is the individual site assessment report for the roofs. Tells you who I spoke to up there and, and when, and it tells you a little bit about it. In this particular case, the list only included, the introductory comments, the second sentence only include the 500 building. We found the majority of the roofs there were identified as being in poor or failing condition, as a lot of your roofs are in this district. So anyway, went through that and came up with, really based on the budget that was voted, you know, very outlined, outlined report for this particular one. And then I'll show you some more information if we can keep going down. This is the typical, you know, visual representation of what we saw when we were out there, explanation of what was approved at the top. And this is 500 building upper left and upper right. And then some other comments about some other portions on site. You'll find this for every, every site in the district. You'll have a discussion of the roof condition and what should be done. Okay, and just some more. Some, some conditions which are sort of typical, and if you can go back up a little bit, Mr. Hetjank. Right there, there's some conditions that are kind of typical when you get older roofs, you know, things are kind of worn out. You can see on the right, there's a piece of plywood over a hole in the roof there. And then a little further down, you have a lot of work occurring over time on these schools. And on the lower right, you see a, what's called a retrofitted installation of a, of an electrical conduit, and should be hot-mopped in or whatever the, the material is. And just showing some things that are not, are not typical. Someone's come out and attempted a patch on the left side there over the administrative offices. That's right over your office, isn't it? And then the reason I'm showing you this is because since this particular one, La Colina Junior High School roofs, was broken up into a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, the balance has been put on the, on the future projects list. And this is, just showing you how he came up with the numbers here. The next page is, this is a summary, next page is the detail. And here you go, if you can stop there, and you can see that there's a square footage. There's some allowances for repairs, and there, you know, there's just some other factors that enter in. Also, I have assigned, as I told you last time, a 10% contingency to all these, because we don't know exactly where we're in design. And then we assigned, if it's unknown, if the timeframe is unknown, have assigned a 36-month escalation. So to the extent that you do things sooner, we're able to get some more funding and move forward with some of these projects, get them going, get them on the books, then of course, the escalation goes down, the overall cost goes down, as you could probably well imagine. Okay, let's move to a Measure R project here, our site, Harding University Partnership School. This one was interesting because there were, there was a little, a nice list there, as you can see, of projects that were on the Measure Q list. And then there were some that weren't specifically on the list, which we'll come to. But this particular site, I wanted to point out overall that there's play equipment, there's asphalt, there's some concrete issues, there's some drainage issues. And this is one that we really recommend master planning. Of course, you're lucky because you have two sides of the, two sides of the campus. You can divide that up and do one at a time if you want, but you should, it should all be master planned together. If you could toggle down a page. This is the specific report for the play equipment fall surfaces. And again, there's a budgetary estimate on each one and some recommendations, sort of the same recommendation for all these at Harding, that they be planned together. And, you know, some rationale, some explanations. I don't know if you've been out there, but this, these playgrounds are really, you know, sort of difficult out there at Harding, should be addressed, in my view. So if you can go down a little more, and then we'll get into the site drainage. You know, same sort of, sort of thing, it talks about, you know, talks about the particulars of the site and the conditions that are existing. Did talk to your civil engineers on this, on all of these. For example, this went to the right, the proper consultant, hopefully. Talked to these. And then the site drainage was also on the list. And if you could just keep toggling down, please. Some different elements of the, the site conditions and the need for the drainage, it explains, explains a few things there. And then the concrete walkway replacement, sort of treated in the same way. And a little further on, I guess. So the reason I wanted to show these representative projects to you is so that you understand when you're looking in Section 1, and for example, you're looking at that summary, and then you're going to that attachment Q2, this example, which has these, or I'm sorry, R2, would have these all listed, have a line item for the play equipment, a line item for the concrete, a line item for the asphalt, then you know that that's where that came from. So if you want to go see, gosh, why did he say so many square feet? And why does it include, you know, replacing the, the drainage components or whatever it is? Then there's a, there's a rationale for you. Okay, these are, this is another thing on Harding that was not on the list. And this is taken from Attachment R3, which are the things that were addition, Q3 and R3 in addition to the lists, if you remember. And this is for, there's asphalt on the previous page for one side of the campus, there's some asphalt on the other side of the campus. So I just want to bring to your attention where those are, if you want to look through this. Of course, a phone call, I can tell you right where to go anytime, or an email. And I think that's, that probably handles the presentation of the report and how it's used. And do you have any questions so far on, on the report itself and how to get through it? How to understand? Okay, well, call me if you do. So the, the next thing I'd like to talk to you about, if I may, is the, the items that were brought to the board. Here we have those, David. Here we go. Oh, they were the last two, the last two pages, I don't know if I-
I'll go over that when I do the priorities.
Okay, you're going to go over the pages 61 and 62? Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. Is there any, anything else you'd like to know right now?
Board, any questions for Mr. Coltrip?
Well, I just want to thank Mr. Coltrip and Telacu for a really fantastic job. The depth of detail, I know that, I know this board, I'm sure, has begun the drilling or has completed the drilling down into the detail. And it's, the decision this evening was not to have Mr. Coltrip go page by page through the two binders. Hopefully, that, that was okay. And to provide you with the rationale and explanation as to how to use the material, which I'm certain you will. And I would imagine there'll be questions moving forward in relationship to the priorities and how we came up with them, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And now we have the report on priorities pending sale of bonds, priority list number two for the elementary and secondary schools. And we have Mr. Tay and Mr. Hetjank on that one.
Let me go right ahead. Thank you. The, the page, the two pages that Kelly was referring to, we put on the attachment on the computer, but they're not in your hard copy spiral binder. So if you look at the back, there's not a page 61 and 62 there. It's just where we, we put it in for our priorities. We've gone through and we've taken all of the input from Telacu. We've had meetings with district maintenance and, and with project managers, Carl Maywells and David Winiger, with principals, with Dr. Cash, and, and come together with what my staff is recommending as priorities for the Measure Q if the board decided to sell the remainder of the bonds. And that's a big if. So we're just discussing priorities if the money's available. We've basically taken what we believe is what we want for both the Measure Q and Measure R, to be the best spent money right now to address problems that hopefully, things that we spend money on now are going to be still sitting there, other than maybe the asphalt needing some attention. But roofs, 30 years, buildings, 50, 60 years, you know, I mean, long-term capital improvements that are going to be done and will provide our students with fantastic facilities for years to come, probably their, the people that are there now, their children, be hopefully using the same facilities. And you look at, was it, Mr. Winiger and I were at Peabody this morning for our monthly meeting with the principal over there. And we're currently doing a couple of projects, and we're looking at that building and the condition of that building and the age of that building, and, and talking about how much better some of our older facilities are, are taking on their age than some of our facilities that were built in the 50s and 60s. And some of those schools that were built rather inexpensively in a short period of time. And so to go through these real quickly, at Dos Pueblos High School, we're recommending, if you want to go through these, that we do some roofs, that we do a modernization of the shower locker room area. I know some of you haven't been in there, but it is, it's been a longstanding priority of Dos Pueblos High School. Also, at Dos Pueblos, for, on the 14th, we'll be giving you a presentation seven days from right now on the proposal for the field renovation. So I would assume that anything that you approve tonight, that anything that's in here for that field renovation would be pending your approval of moving forward with that per the presentation that you will receive in seven days. At least that's the way I would take it. Cabeza Valley Junior High, we have some roofing to do, we have site drainage issues out where Santa Barbara Charter School is currently housed. And Santa Barbara Charter School is in desperate need of a restroom facility. The one they have is kind of like the condition of Adelante's, it needs to be replaced as soon as possible. Also, we need to look at placing that property for being within the required area of distance for their students. We put this down as a Measure Q project because Santa Barbara Charter, we are not required to provide them facilities. We do so and we collect rent from them. They're not like a Peabody or an Adelante. They're chartered through our district, but most of their students are not from our district, so we're not required to give them facilities. If ever they left, those facilities would surely be used by, by the junior high school. So that's why we put this under the Measure Q instead of Measure R. Santa Barbara Charter is a K8, so they have seven, eight students. It just made sense to do it this way because they are a renter rather than a required provider. La Colina, again, as Kelly went through, we have some asphalt to do, or, excuse me, some roofing to do. We've got lucky at La Colina, if you've been out there lately, the playground asphalt was done three or four years ago, and the parking lot was done last summer. And it's really a difference now when you pull into there. Santa Barbara High School, again, we have some, some roofing to do. We have a Peabody Stadium, which needs to be addressed. We've had a consultant look at that as far as structural. We're going through the process now, right now, with DSA to get qualified for matching funds for structural work on that project. Whether that would be replacement of the same thing, replacement of something different is yet to be determined down the road. I'm sure there'll be a discussion of the board in the future when we get to that point. Santa Barbara Junior High School.
Yes, Mr. Hay.
Can I ask a question on this one?
Sure.
Can you take a second to describe what the $4,009,000? Because back in February, that number was over $11 million. I'm just curious, it came down dramatically. So I'm curious what the $4,009,000 covers.
Yes, the-
Come on, plug in the mic.
Was there one there?
Oh, you can use this one.
Uh-huh, this one. The, the previous figure included a replacement of the concrete building that was there, the existing concrete bleachers at the Peabody Stadium, which are built in 1929, something like that. And those, that's quite costly. That was in an estimate that was provided by, on the study that was done by the architect. David, Mr. Hetjank and I looked at that together, and we realized that in order to provide a parity with other, other in the district, that it would need to, we need to pull the concrete building replacement out of there and put in aluminum bleachers, which are what they have on other sites. And so this, the current, the current estimate is less the concrete built, bleacher building replacement, adding in aluminum bleachers.
Okay, I have a major problem with that without further discussion, but I'll wait till later.
It was just a budgetary figure to be parity with the other schools. We assumed at some point in the future when we got to there, hopefully there would be matching funds from the state. Hopefully, there would be augmentation of some kind or discussion of some kind of, do we put the bleachers back where they are? Do we put them in a new location? Do we build them with concrete? Do we build them with aluminum? And that's down the road. And like I say, there's a lot of discussion to happen between stakeholders and, and staff and the board. We're a long way from a, a decision on that. What we are doing right now is marching down the road to qualify for structural hardship matching funds.
I would hate to, I guess I would hate to spend $4.9 million if we go down, marching down the road and, and end up having, having spent that money, but-
We wouldn't.
We're not going to spend that. That's just a budget- That's just a budgetary allowance saying within, we're just setting aside money. The state is gonna tell us whether they're gonna give us money to replace what's there in kind or replace with something else. And they have yet to even get to that point of letting us know if they're gonna for sure give us matching funds and if so, on what basis? On a repair basis, on a replacement basis, and a replacement with what basis? So we're just throwing in a number right now as a placeholder dollar figure. Once we get down close to determining what that project would be, we may recommend that it be a different sized project and we not do something else. We may recommend that we do a larger project. I don't know yet. It's just, it's just too big of an unknown to put a finite dollar amount, and that is just a guess at this point in time.
Okay, just, this community needs an awful lot of discussion whether to tear down an institution that's been there for 80 years.
Absolutely.
And I have a follow-up question. I mean, how are we to approach this list? Because if this is the list that's going to be approved, how do we know what's really gonna come back to us as far as considering this? There's two items on this list that I don't actually know that I would be comfortable approving, perhaps because I see the need a little bit different compared to the rest of that. But if it's on this list and it's approved, then my interpretation is that it's moving forward. And I'm not sure there's been discussion about two of these items that is needed discussion to even figure out if we move forward.
My plan was to go through this list and then, if the board decides to approve resolutions to sell more bonds, in the action part of the agenda, we would come back to this list again. We would talk about, is there something the board wants to take off of here, something the board that wants to put on here? Does the board want us to move forward with all these projects except three and put them out of whole while we gather more information? It's all gonna be up to what you choose to do during the action portion of the agenda. This is just our recommendation as a starting point, and we'll do whatever you direct as far as other things that may be a higher priority than something that's on here.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
We wanted to give you, I mean, we got, you, the three, two binders. And to, our attempt was to reduce it to a more manageable conversation.
Thank you, that's helpful.
This is just our recommendation and things that we thought were important. Going back to Santa Barbara Junior High, there's science classrooms. That project has an architecture assignment. That was a high priority for that site. Again, using one of the ITS portables and one of the classrooms in that facility for interim housing while those are being remodeled. And phase two of the asphalt, we're planning on doing phase one of the asphalt with money on hand. That would be the, what I call the eastern half of all the asphalt, and then the western half would be under phase two. San Marcus High School, we have a couple old, old, old portables that LaCuesta used to be in that we'd like to demolish and then replace them with two of the portables that used to be in the corner where the new wing was built that are up by the track right now. The gymnasium roof has some structural issues with the arches on the non-pool side of the gymnasium. If you've been out there, you may have noticed that one has kind of a large Band-Aid on it, a structural Band-Aid, I should say. We have some HVAC issues out there, some roofing issues out there. And that's, and in our measure Q language, we did add replacing the elevator in this building. And that would not, that would just be taking the interior car and its control mechanism and replacing that. Of all the elevators in the district, it is starting to create problems. It is older. Sometimes we're having trouble getting parts for it. We have a long lead time for parts. We have had a couple of people stuck in the elevator where we had to call the elevator company and then they've been in there for, not very long, but they've been in there waiting for the elevator company to respond. And it is the only viable access to the basement for going down for storage, for mailing, for different functions that are down there, because the other stairs at the outside lead out towards the back to the little breezeway between our building and the maintenance yard. It's not like there's a good other stairway to get downstairs. And so at some point in time, we need to really consider doing that in there. And I decided to make this a priority just because it is used so often by district staff where there's not a good stairway up and down. Yes?
You know, I noticed it when I was going through that, that number you have right here, $297, $898, was a little different in another place. And is there a reason for that discrepancy?
I'd have to refer back to Kelly on that. He probably did some investigation on, with an elevator companies of what it would actually cost.
Yeah, I saw 200, 220 and some other locale, and it wasn't $297.
Of course, the $297 would include all the things that Kelly had talked about before as far as an escalation factor and a contingency, which may not have been in that original number.
Okay.
Right, and Mr. Haynuk is correct about that. There was some information that came in and it made it, it made it onto this list because this was all done, it was printed afterwards in comparison to the, what's in your report.
So that, this number actually reflects that true number versus the number that was probably cited in the report.
Right, what it includes in real specifically is an allowance for some modifications to the area surrounding the cart, which might be necessary. I wasn't quite sure after talking to the elevator company and going into design.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hearn?
Two quick questions. You've said on a couple occasions that these recommendations are your staff's recommendations. What way into the, into your staff? What did, how did your staff get feedback to take from 300 million with the projects and what led it down to 35 million? Who hated that discussion?
Site principals, our maintenance manager, Bruce Chavez, Steve Vizzolini, Dave Thomas is foreman in there, Carl Mayrose, David Winiger, talking with our architects and engineers that also know our site, talking with Kelly, who now knows all our sites, talking with Dr. Cash on district-wide priorities and what's important. All of those things came together to come down with these as our recommendations. If we had, if we had another $20 million, we'd have no problem going down the list a little bit further, giving you another $20 million worth.
Were the principals involved originally? Or had they been involved later in this stage when you started to whittle down?
The principals were involved initially when we went out with our projects list. We visited each principal. We found out what the principal's number one priority was. Kelly has involved them in the list, but we did not go out and meet with each of them individually while we developed this list. We did call a couple principals about reconfirming priorities and some things on their site. I can give you a good example of that with Dos Pueblos High School. We had discussion that, with Carl Mayrose and myself and Sean Carey, not all three at the same time, but discussions about Dos Pueblos and needing to do, and Kelly, needing to do the roofs and needing to do drastically some improvements to that shower locker area, saying, you know, what is most important for Dos Pueblos? Can some of those roofs wait? Do we need to go there and address this other thing right now? And discussions like that came up with this list. We talked with Ed about his priorities at that site as far as what's most important to them and what they'd like to see. And we've, that some, we've had discussions with every principal on here, maybe not within the last 60 days, but definitely on what's important at their site and what's, and what's being done.
Two other questions. If we do all of this, we've spent $75 million. Is that correct on the high school, on the secondary?
Correct.
How much has been spent on classroom modernization of that $75 million, approximately?
I don't have that percentage. We'll have to go through and-
Very much.
And, well, you have the theater, you have the theater at Lacumba. It's used every day for classroom purposes, yeah. We have our science labs. We have our, 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 well, yeah, we moved the Health Academy in, plus four generic classrooms, getting rid of the old portables. We'll have library, library, oh, 75, this is secondary.
Okay.
The new kitchen has a classroom teaching station in there. And a lot of these, every roof, I guess you could say, is kind of a classroom modernization, because it's kinda hard to be sitting in your classroom learning without interruption when there's a bucket or something sitting there catching water leaking while it's raining.
I'm talking about the classrooms that have two sockets in them that Mrs. Park is so aptly mentioned in a Newshawk article.
We do, I'm sorry I missed the article. I would tell you, with our, with our special projects team, we've been putting in electrical outlets in a fairly timely manner every time a school has requested them for whatever equipment they may have, whether it be new computers or anything else.
That's what I wanted to hear.
We've been, we've been finding a way to address that with developer fees for reconstruction of the schools.
Good, that's, that's good news. Thank you.
Now let me go to page 61 and 62. This, this part here. This is a reiteration of what was on there before, last meeting. I'd like to now talk about measure R. The meeting I was unable to attend, the board tabled the measure R discussion and priorities for funds on hand from bonds sold. So we wanted to show you a couple of options of what could be done with that. One thing we could do is, we could stop any new measure R projects from going forward and do a downsized library. If the board decided, we don't want to sell any more bonds and we want to keep as much of the commitment for libraries at our elementary district as possible, we could do this. It would mean going back and starting over with design and resubmitting to Division of State Architect. Option two would be the items that were previously discussed at a prior board meeting. And so I just want to let you know that there are different ways to handle things. The good news is, we found out on Friday that the local head of the office at Division of State Architect has directed his staff to start the review process for our two libraries that was being held up due to, I don't wanna say this, not following the direction of the State Architect Sacramento's office and attempting to hold the district hostage to do other things, has been now put on a parallel road thanks to a visit by an architect who was able to see the right person at the right time.
And I think it would be interesting for the board to know, when were those projects originally placed into the Division of the State Architect? You know, Dave?
Dave, about- Four months ago. Four months ago.
So after four months, they now will begin the plan review.
So it, it's challenging sometimes, you know? Paperwork doesn't get logged in, change orders and other paperwork get lost. We got an email that says, oh, I know it's here, but I haven't seen it for six weeks. I'm sure it'll turn up someplace. I'll let you know as soon as it does. The short version of what actually somebody put in writing in an email. So there are a lot of things that are beyond our control. I just wanted to let you look at that and we'll come back to it in the action part of the agenda, provided the board decides to move forward with some bond sales. If there's no other current questions on measure R, I'll turn it over to Dr. Cash for the next segment of the conference agenda.
Mr. Hearn?
Are you gonna go through school by school on the option if we do pass the bonds?
We can do whatever the board pleases.
You just did that with the high school, but are you gonna do it at the elementary?
We, I can, I can do that now. Thank you for keeping track of me. Our measure R, if we do sell the bonds, we're recommending that we move forward with the library at Adams. Included in that project is more than just a library. We have to bring in some interim housing. We have to demolish some old buildings to make room for the new library. We have to relocate some existing buildings. We have some site work and covered canopies to do. The fire department is requiring an extra bit of asphalt for a fire road to get fire trucks back to the back by the playground, and the installation of two new fire hydrants. So from our initial library project, people that have the authority and the whims to add things to it, like our local fire authority for safety of our students and Division of State Architect has required additional things. Also at Adams Elementary School, some of the outdoor teaching areas, the, in these areas, the outdoor teaching areas drain towards the classroom doors. And you'll see sandbags at those doors every time it rains. And so it is a very difficult situation, especially when you have anybody that's physically challenged that's not able to negotiate over that sandbag. We did correct that situation at the kindergarten building this last summer. And if you've been by there, I think you'll agree, it's a much improved situation. Also at Adams Elementary School and the other elementaries, finishing off our playground equipment, fall surface, it's getting rid of our five bar, making our playgrounds 100% handicapped accessible with the port-in-place fall surface. Five bar is not a real good surface for a physically challenged individual. It may meet the minimum code, but it's not what we agreed to with our lawsuit settlement. And so with our lawsuit settlement, we agreed that we would not use those type of surfaces. We used something that was easy to negotiate for our physically challenged students. At Franklin Elementary School, multipurpose room upgrade. Franklin is desperately in need of an upgrade to that room. We've had a few board meetings there in the past. Lights and other things make a great sound while you're there trying to hear. It's just an outdated facility that needs help, as do some of our other multipurpose rooms. But I think Franklin is one definitely in need. And you talk about give and taking what you put on the list. I mean, Adams' multipurpose room is already, also in a great need of a renovation. But, you know, we want to try and do something for everybody. Adams is getting the new library. So that's part of our process of how we think when we put things on this list. Believe me, there's a lot of critical things that we'd like to have on this list that are not on the list. At Harding, we have a fire alarm system that is starting to fail. It has not yet failed. Our one at Washington did fail and has been replaced, but that's coming up. And again, the drainage and walkway and asphalt projects that Kelly talked about, and if you've ever been out to Harding, you'll know on that large asphalt playground, it's desperately in need of some upgrades. McKinley, their asphalt playground's in a little better shape than Harding's, but it's gonna, it's gonna need something in the near future. Again, Monroe, that fire alarm is not a, is a larger replacement, but it does need an upgrade, upgrade to keep that functioning. Open Alternative School, again, providing them with their play equipment and fall surface comparable to our other elementaries. That we're planning on, one, because of the size of the school, we're planning on one piece of equipment that fits their whole population. So we'll have components for different age children. Peabody Charter in the kindergarten area, we're talking about the play equipment and asphalt in that area, definitely needs some, some work. And we have a little bit of asphalt surface maintenance to do outside of two classrooms that's not getting done with the current restroom project. That restroom project has a part A and a part B, and a part of that part B is addressing the needs for some sidewalk replacement to meet ADA accessibility. Roosevelt, you said Roosevelt's a brand-new school, but we need to remember that parts of Roosevelt are not a brand-new school. They were sitting there along with all the portables that were there at one time. And the multipurpose and office rooms definitely need some heating, ventilation, air conditioning replacement and some roofing. ventilation, air conditioning replacement, and some roofing. At Washington, again, replacing that library, the library's been demolished. The current library is in a temporary, large leased building. And, again, out of our control, you know, it's been sitting there for four months, but when we went in and submitted that project, one of the first things they told us was, we don't like the fact that this one portable is that close to the library. We want you to move it. Is it really required? No, but we want it done. It's what we want to approve the plans. So the plan is to move the one portable, I believe it's number 20. It would end up eventually where the temporary library is now and would be converted to office space to give us the office space that we lost when we tore down the library. The office space is currently in the temporary library because we told our, through our California Environmental Quality Act, we stated that we would not be increasing the population of classroom, or number of classrooms at this site. And remember, with the library, we're adding a classroom. So we're adding a classroom with the library project. We're taking one out of service and we convert it to offices. So we're neutral as far as adding more traffic or activity to that site. And that site is also in the coastal zone and went through the coastal review.
Ms. Parker?
I'll have more questions when we get to these as action items. But I just wanted to sort of talk in general right now about these priority lists, both for Q and for R, in that there are, you know, the telecue list is huge. And, but I know facilities is well aware of what's on the telecue list, but lots of things that aren't on this first list that would be paid for by the bond money that we actually have. But what are you doing in terms of maintaining and repairing buildings? Like, for example, the Franklin multipurpose room, it may take a couple of years for DSA approval to come through for modernization on that. In the meantime, you may have ceiling tiles falling down. You may have portables that are leaking that are due in six months to be taken away, but they're leaking now. How is facilities handling work orders that come through for projects that are on this list or projects that they may be where are on a larger wish list? How is that working?
If we know that, if we know that a project's coming up like the Harding multipurpose room, we wouldn't go and put a brand-new unit for heating ventilation. There's probably six of them on that roof. We'd probably do without one for the short period of time. We would make the place safe for ceiling tiles by going in and actually, if the glue is failing, we put some screws in there to make sure that they don't, those that appear to be loose, they don't fall down and hurt anybody on the head. As far as our portable classrooms, we're going through, we have gone through within the last year, year and a half with our special projects crew and reconstructing those portables as far as new siding, making them watertight, doing things like that. Roofing, what's not addressed with this, we've been patching with maintenance money and doing major, some major patching areas or replacements with our deferred maintenance money when it's available. So it's a combination of available maintenance funds and available deferred maintenance funds to put the Band-Aid on until we can do the correct fix. And we've been doing a lot of Band-Aiding.
Dr. Pass?
Just a quick question about the delays from DSA in terms of accounting for that cost. Is that part of the 10% contingency that's there? Is it part of 36-month escalation numbers that you have, or a combination of both perhaps? I'm just trying to understand when we have that delay, I know that it's costing us some money.
Delay would probably take part of that 4% annual escalation, apply that back to one-third of a year. So you're talking about somewhere between 1% and 2% extra that would come out of that contingency due to the fact that for most of the period of time, construction costs rise. Now they're rising very slowly before they rose fast and then came way down when, it seems like when, you know, everybody bids a little bit higher when everybody's busy. But when people are not that busy, the bids come down and they're more reasonable. And we found that we've gotten some very reasonable bids. The cost of construction has not escalated far beyond what we thought it'd be. It's going up at a nice, slow pace, if I could use that word. So yes, if you wait four months, there will be, in my opinion, a slight increase in costs. And that would be true with any type of project. The one thing that's very volatile is our asphalt, which depending on the price of oil. If oil's up, asphalt costs more than when oil's down.
And I just want to clarify that the reason that Cleveland School's not up here is because we already did some renovation for them. And so that would be the reason they're not up here, correct?
Yeah, we've done a lot of work with the past bond issue. And with this bond issue, we went through and did a lot of the field renovation. We've done a lot of work on their kindergarten rooms. We've done some painting out there. We've done some roofing. But again, Cleveland Elementary School still has a need to go in and do some interior finish upgrades of a lot of classrooms, just like a lot of our schools did. And so there is still a need at Cleveland, although it's not as critical as some of these. But Cleveland, we're still not done. We're doing the last phase of that playground. There's two areas we're putting in, an outdoor seating area and an outdoor garden.
Thank you. Ms. Edelson?
I don't see anything relating to the historic junior highs where the windows have, I mean, huge expense to redo those. And there's no maintenance talked about on any of those. Is that just something that's?
That's something that is in dire need, but we thought that these things were more critical. They definitely do need to be replaced. We do address a lot of window, actual glass or the glazing needs to be replaced. We go back in and repudy those. But a lot of those, we have a great need for painting and going back through and working those windows at all of our historical sites with old windows. And that requirement or that need has not gone away. And it's sure, something I'm sure Dr. Cash will touch upon when he gets to his part of the presentation about the dire needs that we critically have for this district as far as capital improvements. I mean, we have some fantastic, beautiful old buildings that have served this district for a long time. And I know my staff, I've talked to Kelly, Dave, Carl, we're all very in tune to preserving the nature of those historical buildings. I think that's one of the jewels of the community.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Thanks, Kelly. So there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done in our district. I think the assessment that Telecue did is about, is maybe the most detailed, probably is the most detailed assessment ever in the history of our district, with a lot, a lot of data, a lot of information. I would like to be able to sit here and tell you that it's all wonderful, great, happy information. But I guess we could attach no emotional quality to it and just call it data. But as a parent and as the superintendent, I have to tell you that the info is pretty disheartening about our need in our district. And I thought I'd just take a very brief period of time because it makes no sense to discuss it in detail, but just to talk about the unfunded things, the things that won't get done that we've noted. I'll start with what Board Ben Edelson commented on, and that's the window replacement on our historical schools. We asked Telecue, Kelly Coltripin, to create the document they have before you, and particularly put it in some good chunks so that it's easily digestible. But when you look at, just in our secondary schools, which we're talking about, Santa Barbara High School, Santa Barbara Junior High School, and Lacumbra Junior High School, just the window replacement of $23 million, that's a huge chunk of money. One of the things that I really wanted to discuss and bring forward and just bring to the board's attention and to our community's attention is the number of portable classrooms that we have. And it's, I don't even want to call them portable. We do move them around occasionally. We'll move a couple around today, this summer hopefully. But these are fairly permanent, what I would say, substandard, on a permanent basis, housing. And you have before you the chart, we have 163 portable classrooms in our district. And I believe that Dr. Ebenstein's presentation to the board several months ago, which I think is pretty accurate, indicates that our student enrollment is going to remain about where it is, give or take some kids, some changes in the elementary schools and the secondary schools, over the next 20 years and out. And so for me, as a superintendent, to tell you that, well, it's okay for us to have 163 classrooms that are in these buildings because we're going to, our enrollment's going to drop by several hundred or 1,000 students, just isn't based on reality. I think it's, the reality is, is that we have children every day in these classrooms and that this is their classroom. So, and I asked Dave Hetjung to put it in these chunks because I thought it would be important for everyone to know how old some of our portables are. And I really didn't have a clue, I mean, I've been in all of them several times. So I had my own kind of layperson's guess at how old our portables were. But if somebody had told me prior to this chart that almost a third of them were over 30 years, I think I would have been shocked. So one of the big chunk items in the unfunded list are replacing those portable classrooms with permanent buildings. Permanent buildings, I believe, our students deserve and that our community wants. Because I don't think we can call them portables. They're not temporary housing either. We've demonstrated that since almost a third have been around for 30 years that we consider them to be permanent housing for students in our district. Another big chunked-out item in here that I thought was really important is classroom projects. And some of the detail, when you look at classroom projects, goes to the issue that Mr. Herron raised, that what are we doing inside these learning spaces for kids? We've done a lot of work so far, and I would agree with Mr. Hetjung. It's not very sexy, but when we do replace a roof, in a sense, we've kind of modernized the classroom. But that's clearly not what anybody thinks. When they think of modernizing a classroom, they think, what am I going to see differently or experience differently when I walk through that classroom door? And we've got a lot of work to do in that. I'm glad that Dave talked about his special projects crew because if he hadn't, I would have at this point. Because they've done a tremendous job really responding to schools' needs quickly and being out there because he has them, they're on some kind of special schedule, right? Yeah. And so they're there on days when there aren't kids there and they can get some work done. And they've been really good at getting to some of those specific changes. In particular, as we've moved toward a different learning environment for students where kids are going to be, you know, using technology, teachers will as well, they've had to respond really quickly to that changing demand. I think done a really good job at getting, you know, there's two of them?
Two of them.
Two of them to our 20-plus sites and getting those things done as quickly as possible. But we still have identified millions of dollars in classroom modernization, classroom projects that we know we need to engage in. What's interesting about all of this, both the Measure Q and Measure R unfunded lists, is that this isn't about, I wish it was, that we're going to create these new buildings and house these new centers for, in our secondary schools, for careers that we know our kids are going to need experiences in. This is really about renovating, repairing, and bringing up to what I would say would be the late 20th century school facility standards, which we clearly, as the assessment indicates, have a need to do. And the last thing I would say in relationship to this is that one of the things that this document, the in-detail documents provide you, I believe is a good rationale for why these projects are, have been identified as being needed. And I think that's really important in understanding it. It's not, from the perspective, and I am obviously not a construction expert, but, so I ask a lot of dumb questions. But from the perspective of a layperson, these are things that need to be done to maintain the school so they can last another 100 years, which is what we need and our community needs. So I think it's a good unfunded list to look at. It's good to just understand the depth of our facility assessment needs so that when we bring forward projects or we talk about capital facilities, it will be within the context of these unfunded as well as whatever happens this evening. So with that, I think we're finished with the conference agenda unless there are questions for me.
Board, any questions for Dr. Cash? Mr. Herron?
I noticed on the unfunded list, there are photovoltaic systems at several of the secondary schools, but I don't see any in the elementary schools. Were we still thinking of those systems on the two libraries?
No.
Short answer to both of them. Back at the beginning of the possible probable project list, we did a photovoltaic study at San Marcos High School. And we put placeholders in there of dollar amounts just to say, okay, if we have money and we want to do a photovoltaic project to generate electricity, to save money for the general fund, then we could do that. With the elementary schools, whether or not the use of photovoltaic pencils out as being cost-effective depends on what methodology you use for guessing what future electrical rates will be. If you want to guess based on historical data, yeah, they probably will pencil out. But if you want to guess based on data provided by all the different agencies, including the US government, about what electrical rates are going to be in the future, these projects are too small to pencil out as being cost-effective. So you could put photovoltaics on there, but you're probably doing it to show a good intention for the community that you're reducing your carbon footprint, but you won't be saving any money. You'll be spending more money.
I did notice that also that the security cameras are on the long-term list. Are we under any pressure or is it a benefit for safety purposes to have security cameras?
Yeah, we're going to do a pilot program at Santa Barbara High School. We'll be bringing forward a very specific program for you to look at in relationship to determining whether those act as a safety measure, whether they're a deterrent or they're effective. And we did install security cameras already at Santa Barbara High School in both the MAD Academy.
The MAD Academy and the theater, both.
And the theater, right.
The MAD Academy is probably in process. Both of those were funded with funds generated by others, not district capital funds.
And just to reiterate what I had mentioned earlier, what Dr. Cash mentioned, you know, when I see on this list in the future a tremendous number of classroom modernization items, those are the kinds of things that I do agree that the voters expected to see some difference when they walk in our school.
Exactly. New flooring, new wall finishes, new lights, new ceilings, you bet, making it a bright, cheery learning environment.
Ms. Parker?
I think Dr. Cash and Mr. Hetjung, this is, maybe I'm, I know essentially I'm requesting a future agenda item related to these projects. And that is because our community is hearing about this in the context of the bonds and what we don't have for the bonds. But we do have annual maintenance money that we're spending. And we have choices to make in the near future about that maintenance budget. And especially as we're moving forward, I think that we need to have the discussion about, you know, yes, it's clear that we would need some larger source to do a lot of this work. But what is it, how can this interplay with the, with our annual maintenance budget?
Boy, you must have been sitting in the meeting that we had today with Mr. Hetjung and Ms. Jete. And that's exactly, we're going to be bringing forward to the board a, what we're going to call a repair renovation plan. That will include a look at all of our systems, how we're going to spend our deferred maintenance, our routine restricted maintenance, developer fees, what that will look like. I've asked Mr. Hetjung to work with his staff in putting together things in relationship to painting, ceiling tile, ballast replacements, flooring replacements, so that we can have systems in place that the board will have as a guidepost when we would bring forth any individual item. You could look and say, well, yes, I understand why you're bringing this forward, but we're going to, we'll provide you with that plan, hopefully within the next couple of months. Probably sometime this summer would be my guess.
Dr. Pass?
I had actually the same question originally when this was brought up. It's like, it's great we're doing all this work, but what about maintenance? And so I would agree with my board colleague that that's a critical piece that we need to look at. Because I know a lot of these pieces, who knows when we're going to get to them. And we may, none of us be on the board, none of us be around when some of these, hopefully they'll get to that point in time, being optimistic. But they may not. And/or be deferred for such a long time that we have to continue to have maintenance on them. And so I think that's a really critical question for the board to continue to consider. And how do we deal with that as a school district? Because the windows, for example, that was brought up earlier is another issue area. And I can see it when I go visit the classrooms. So that's a big, important issue.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. So I think this concludes our conference agenda, and we are moving moving on to the action agenda. And the very first item on our action agenda is approval of the resolutions in support of bond sales. Ms. Jete?
Thank you. So before you, you have five resolutions, and I want to explain why I did five resolutions instead of three resolutions. And then we'll get to the PowerPoint real quickly, that you have seen a couple times before. So the, the way I wanted to do this was to give you an option on how much the tax rate would be for each issuance of the new bonds. So for the elementary district, we have the availability of selling $20 million worth of bonds. One of the resolutions, Resolution 2012-2013-48, is current interest bonds, capital appreciation bonds, and convertible cap, cap appreciation bonds. Resolution 2012-2013-49 is current interest bonds only. As you are aware, and you'll see in the PowerPoint, that the capital appreciation bonds have a lower tax rate than the all current interest bonds. And I did the exact same thing for the high school. The fifth resolution, that's before you, 2012-2013-50, is a refund of our Measure V, which was in 2000, bonds, our Series C bonds, and we're going to refund 17 million, which will save the taxpayers approximately 1.1 million dollars. So, that one is kind of like a bonus on that. So with that, we'll have the PowerPoint. And we also have two people from Keogen here today to help you answer and help us answer any questions that you have. But I'll go through the PowerPoint real quickly, and you can stop me at any time, because most of us have already seen this before. So here we are with the Scenario 1, which is SIBs only, that's current interest bonds. And we're looking at 21.75 per AV for the tax rate. And we're looking at 2013-14 and estimated AV amount of 2% and thereafter 3%. And you can see that, that's a totaling of $34 million that we would, almost $35 million that we will sell in Series A and B bonds, the 20 for the Series B. And they're all following the 25 years within a certain interest rate of 8%. And the repayment ratio is under 4, 4 to 1. Here's how the payment schedule looks like. And you remember seeing that we have 100% SIBs, and then the repayment ratio is 1 to 5, 7 to 1, 1.57 to 1. Again, you're familiar with these slides, but it shows you how our, the dotted line is the, the red dotted line is the voter estimate of 13.93, 98. And we're suggesting a new estimated max of 21.75, which is the dotted blue line. And you can see that we still have a little bit of room there, but by 2041, using the SIBs only. Here's the combination of the SIBs and capital appreciation bonds and convertible bonds. This would bring the tax rate down to 18.75 per 100%, or 100,000 AV. We have 1314 at 2%, 1415 at 3%, 1516 at 4% AV growth, and thereafter 4.5, in a maximum term of 25 years. So that's the cabs and convertibles. And as you can see, you pay the cabs back at the end of the bond issuance, which is back in '36, '37, and '38, 2036, '37, '38. And you can see that we would be borrowing very little in cabs, but however, the cab principal is 474,000, and you turn around and, and pay back 5 million, which is crazy. But it's an option. Again, the dotted line is the voter estimate of 1398, and the new estimate is the dotted blue line, the new estimate is 1875. Secondary district is basically the same. We look at $17.50 per AV, with 2013 at 1% growth, and 1415 at 2, and then thereafter at 3, 3% growth. This is a term of 24 years. Again, remaining within the 25-year limit, and the interest rate is under 8%. This is SIBs only, and our, our ratio is, repayment ratio is 1.57 to 1, with 100% SIBs, which is cap, current interest bonds. The dotted red line is our voter estimated max, which is 12.48, and our new estimate is 17.50. This is with cabs and SIBs, and it brings the rate down to $15.50 per AV. And you can see the AV growth and how it's changed. Well, no, it's a, it's the same, isn't it? Yeah, it's the same. And as you can see, the cabs, if we use 17.2% of cabs, we borrow 6 million, we repay 17 million. So my, if you have any questions, we can answer the questions now.
Board, questions or comments? Mr. Heron?
Somebody else might jump in. Can you go back to the elementary school slide? And actually, either one is okay, but, because the question's still the same. Yeah. I'm just, that one, yeah, the next one. No, that's not it. Yeah, there. No, one more.
Go back?
There. I'm just curious. No, that's Scenario 2. No, Scenario 2 insults my intelligence, but go ahead, go back to, and I told that Meg already, so she knows it insults my, I felt it insulted my intelligence.
It was not intended.
I know, but that's, that's how I interpreted it. But, you know, the one that has the estimated growth rate.
Of that?
I'm just curious. You know, that's estimated that after 1314, a 3% growth rate. It's my understanding that as that number changes, if it doesn't get to 3, if it goes higher or if it goes lower, the tax rate will change automatically. That, I mean, we have no control over that. This is a pure guess at 3%. If it happens to be 2%, I'd like the public to know, what would the rate be at 2% approximately?
I think Joanna Bose will be able to answer that question.
Good evening. I'm Joanna Bose, and this is my associate, Chris Erhart, from Keogen. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Cash and Ms. Jete, it's nice to be here. Let's remember how your tax rate is determined. It is your debt service divided by your assessed valuation, and that gives you your tax rate. So if you use a 3% AV, you'll see these numbers.
Right.
If you use a 2% AV, what are you doing? Your denominator is getting smaller, and your tax rate is going to go up. So we have run the numbers for Ms. Jete about 2%. And what happens is that your tax rate automatically goes up more, goes up beyond 1338 or 1241. And you also cannot borrow 20 million or 35 million dollars, because it limits the amount of your capacity in the 25-year range. When these bonds were originally sold, originally, I think, programmed or modeled, they assumed we would go beyond 25 years. We now have the restriction, we don't, for current interest bond, you don't have a restriction, but 25 years is the restriction. So, to change the AV, you just buy 1%. You could, and you could make it 1%. You could have no growth, if you think it's realistic, that you think in 25 years you will have zero AV growth. I mean, that is that consideration. But the less, the more you reduce your AV, the higher your tax rate, which means that when you add new bonds, your tax rate's going to go even higher. Do you want to add any?
I guess I just asked a simple question.
It's, it isn't, it isn't as simple. I wish it were simple. I, I have thought about this for so long. I was, I asked Ms. Erhart, who's been with us for two years.
If we had done this chart with a 2% up there, what would it be?
It would be 24, 25.
24, 25.
Oh, I thought, I saw you wanted to understand why.
No, I just want to know, I want to make it very clear to the public that that number we can't control. We're assuming 3%, which I don't think any economist would agree with, but I know, but we're assuming that. But if it's not that, that's, that's the one item we can't control. And so if it's 2%, if it's 5%, the number's going to go down. You know, if it goes back like we've done historically at 4 or 5%, the number will go down. I just want the public to know that we can't control that number, and if the, we don't get 3%, the tax rate will, will go up.
And that's part of why you're currently already above the estimate you guys gave, because no one predicted the, the real estate crisis that we've had over the last few years. So we're already above the estimate that was given to voters back when these bonds were passed.
In 2010.
Yep.
And they projected a long-term rate of 4.5%, is what we think, is what we have reconstructed. So if, you can use whatever tax rate you wish. It just, it just depends on what happens with your, I mean, your AV rates.
And the same question on the secondary, I understand the rate would be 1950 if it went up 2%.
Right.
Well, and I just wanted to clarify something, Ms. Bose. I think in the last presentation, you also showed us the past 25 years, and the average AV was 5%, even taking into account the highs and the lows. Is that correct?
Yes. Okay. But I think to trustee Heron's point is that, you know, rolling averages are just that, they're rolling averages. And to be conservative, you wouldn't, we wouldn't use 5%. That doesn't mean they're not going to be consultants in this state not using 5%. But I think that would be not sensible. And particularly, it seems that we're slower coming out of the recession.
Right. And that makes sense. I just wanted to also clarify that.
That's correct.
Besides the, the peaks and the valleys, we ended up seeing 5 in the last 25 years.
That's correct.
Ms. Parker?
And just following up on that, since there are plenty of people here that were not at that last meeting, it was, you know, the county was saying that they, that they continue to use 4% as their long-term projections for AV growth. And so I do see 3% as being conservative, but Mr. Heron's right, it could go down to 2%. But also, just the idea that, I mean, we are so not in control of this, that if it, if it were that assessed value went up, you know, by 5%, it's, it's the county that decides how they're going to smooth things out.
That's correct.
And, and it's not going to be that the next year our tax rates are going to drop. It's going to be, you know, what they feel is essentially best for the property tax owner. So, it, it really is, you know, something that is out of our hands.
Dr. Puss?
Yes, I actually wanted to make the same point with that, that, that part of smoothing out the tax rate for the taxpayer is also somewhat beyond our control. And there have been instances in the past where our county has shot it up really quickly. But as of late, they're trying to keep it as steady as they can possibly do it. So there's a number of factors that I think we're all agreeing that are somewhat a little bit out of our control. So, thank you.
One of the additional factors, and Mr. Price was very gracious about it, is what the assessor assesses your land at. And County Cost County was extremely aggressive in their cutting of their AVs. And that takes a long time to come back. So depending on what the assessor decides, he thinks the increase has been, is really what determines what your tax rate's going to be. He sets, he sets the plate for Ed to take the debt service and, and do the, and do the formula. And yes, he does have the statutory right to add what he calls as a small amount for smoothing. That's usually done, when you sell a bond issue and a new issue, it's usually done upfront, and they carry it over for a number of years. But because of the unpredicted devastating declines in many areas, they used it right up. So he's now trying to rebuild that, and that also does not help. And you don't, you don't have control, and it does not help with your, reducing your tax rate.
Mr. Heron?
Can you explain the interest rate of 3.75? That's a blended rate, I believe. Do you have any idea what the range of that blending rate would be to get to 3.75? I know that you can't tell what it's going to be in August, but if it were today, what would that rate in coupons, what variation coupons would be, you're talking about?
Why don't you go?
Yeah, the coupons are probably somewhere between 2 and 5%. And that's really determined on pricing day by what investors demand. A lot of investors demand 5%. And if that, if that happens, then we might, we try to limit that, but we might have to move forward with some up to 5%. Hopefully, we can try and limit those as much as possible. But the all-inclusive rate here at 3.75% is also a little bit padded. It's a little conservative, just because we know we're not selling right now. If we don't end up selling these bonds until August, we didn't want to give you an estimate of a tax rate that doesn't end up happening. So we have a little bit of leeway here. I think our all-in rate right now is closer to 3.5% than, than to 3.75. But just wanted to make that clear, that we're being a little conservative right now.
Thank you.
Ms. Edelson?
Yes. I go back to what Ed said at the last, or Mr. Heron said at the last meeting. It seems to me the board, and I wasn't here at the time, but took a very conservative view of only releasing bonds at the time of needing the funds. And I look at this and think, the market, obviously, we have no control of, and this is a product of, you know, dealing with what the market is, is demanding or allowing for. So it seems, you know, if the funds are needed for the improvements, that that's important, that we recognize that. And that's when the bonds were voted upon by the community, that that's what, you know, the concern and needs were, you know, was, was about.
All true.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions, board?
I just wonder how much further, we have a discussion paper on method of sale. Is this the time to ask you about method of sale?
Yes, that's why we, we put it on there.
Is this the time to ask about coupon rate, yield rate?
Yep.
Premium?
Yep.
Okay. Which do you want to handle first?
You ask.
I'd like to know method of sale. I mean, we have two methods. One is negotiated, which all of our documentation talks about. And the other is?
Competitive.
Competitive. I've read up on both of them, and it seems negotiated is by far the one that is used the most. But what I've read is the competitive is the one that gives the taxpayer the best rate, possibly.
I'm always quoting history to you, so I apologize, take you back in time. For many years throughout the United States, general obligation bonds were sold as a competitive sale. Competitive sale, the difference between a competitive and a negotiated sale, the biggest difference is on a competitive sale, you just pick a date and a time, and you sell your bonds on that date. You do not, and the consultants are different. It's just a financial advisor and your staff. In a negotiated sale, you select an investment banking firm, an underwriting firm, ahead of time. And they are part of the team. And you can have, you can sell your bonds at, at any time. So it gives you a lot more flexibility. Historically, on any given day, a competitive sale, because it's like an auction, the lowest bid wins, will give you the lowest interest rate. Since 2008, that has been different. Since 2008, we've lost a lot of firms in our marketplace who do not want to make competitive bids. They want to control their capital. They want to know who they're working with. They want to know that they're working with Santa Barbara. They want to know about you. They want to know about your credit. They want to tell the people who are going to buy their bonds about your credit. You don't have any of that in a competitive sale. So part of the change in the market and the increase of the negotiated sales, and you're correct, has been because the firms that underwrite the bonds don't want to take that risk. It's very easy to buy bonds on a competitive market. You just make a low enough bid. The art is to make a low enough bid and have the guy right behind you be at 3.76, and you bid 3.75. So I did a competitive sale this week, we did for Napa Valley Unified School District. And there was a firm, first of all, you wouldn't recognize most of the firms that made the bid. That's different, all right? A lot of them from the East Coast, names you've never heard. Somebody made a little mistake, and they left a lot of money on the table. Now that was good for Napa Valley Unified School District. And his, he had a, we call it a cover, it's a spread, all right, of eight basis points. That's a lot. It should be one. So they really benefited. Other days, and he also, they also got 17, they also got 12 bids, which is huge. Most competitive sales we see now for school districts are, oh, maybe five, six, or seven bids. So the market has changed. And so each time, you have to look at what's best for your district. In a negotiated sale, you get more flexibility in terms of your timing. The market is volatile. Your credit rating is now AA3, A+, that is the current credit rating for the district. That is sort of on the margin of whether or not you're going to be a good, a good bid for a competitive sale. It's usually double A, straight double A rated credits that they really want. Also, with a negotiated sale, the underwriter, the investment banker, has time to pre-sale the bonds to investors. And it all... And it also gives you control if you'd like to have local institutions or people in your area buy the bonds, none of which you have control over in a competitive sale. I do believe in the 2012 refunding that the local banks bought your bonds. In a competitive sale, that probably would not happen. So it's a different distribution, if you will, of your bonds to the people who could buy them, and if you're interested in that. Those are the basic differences.
And I just want to make one point, that the reason why we were AA or AAA, we were...
You were AA2, AA-. And now you're AA3, A+. You went down a notch each.
And that is because of us eating away at the fund balance, basically. But what other districts have not done that? So, I mean, I just wanted to let you know of why that was, and it's because of the state crisis that we've been in for the past five years.
There were more downgrades to school districts last year than there ever have been. It was actually, it was a travesty. That's another agenda item later.
It was a fun series of meetings.
Out of curiosity, and this is only curiosity, not comparison point, what was Napa's rating?
AA1, AA.
Thanks. Ms. Heron?
Is your job as our consultant to get us the best rate available on the day we sell them?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so you, okay.
In a competitive sale, I have all, only control, we don't have any control on a competitive sale. What you do is you prepare the same forms that you're looking at, you pass the same resolutions, you do a preliminary official statement, which will come later, you've seen them before, and you send them to underwriters. And they either elect to make a bid or they don't. And we can call them and talk to them, but they always say, "Oh, don't talk to me till the day of sale," because they have thousands of people calling them all the time. So I have, it's much less controlled. We have, I think, very good success in negotiated sales because we develop comparables and we really can go to work on the underwriter, make sure you get the lowest rate. That is what we do. That is the best part of our practice.
And when would we have, when would the district have information, the closer we get to a date of sale, when would we have information on what you think the market's going to do at that time?
I think to answer your question the proper way is that in pricing in a negotiated sale, on the day before that the actual underwriter, the investment banking firm goes out into the market to sell your bonds, we have a call. On that call, Ms. Jete and us, and all together, and we've gone over what we think the coupons and the yield should be. And then we get on the phone with, in this case, it'll be Piper Jaffray, and we talk about what we want versus what they want. Now, a lot of times, we have that discussion ahead of time, because if we're going to do any arguing, it's not going to be in front of you, all right? And that's what, I mean, this is when we like our friends that are investment bankers, but they're not our friends right now. Now we're on opposite sides of the street. And they make adjustments. And sometimes, if they can't sell bonds, let's say we wanted, let's say we wanted all 4% coupons, you will like that, all 4% coupons. And then they come back and they say, "Well, we can't sell this." The next day, they go out and they sell the, they try to sell the bonds, and nobody wants 4% coupons. And they say, "We can either underwrite these, we could take them in our own inventory, nobody buys them, but we're going to adjust, we're going to make the price lower, yield higher to get them sold, or we can change the coupon and we can sell the bonds." They will give us alternatives. We quantify that for you, you make the decision. It's really pretty clear. I mean, it sounds complicated, but it's pretty...
Because all the documents we're asked to approve tonight are blank.
Well, how could they?
It looks like it's in somebody else's hands totally that we have no control over, but yet we're giving the approval to do it.
Well, you know, one thing that we could do for just an informational piece is when we have that conversation the day before we try to go out and sell these bonds, I can summarize it, what we're talking about. But it's not like I can wait for a resolution or anything like that. I mean, we have to act on it then.
I think the most important thing for you to see in the preliminary official statement or in the final official statement is the total debt service. That's the only big blank that you're looking, yeah, there are lots of little blanks, but they are, they're not really consequential numbers, they're just numbers that we just won't know until we have the date of sale. And I can certainly give you an explanation of that, Ms. Jete. But the number that you need to see is what you're borrowing and what you're paying back. And so we try to tell you that now in these charts, where you're going to sell 35 million, you're going to pay back 50 million. We try to give you a range, all right? But we won't know till that day what the exact numbers are. And that's the main number that's not in there.
And we're acting pure faith that you're going to do the very best for us at the last minute.
Well, hopefully, it's more trust in our expertise. Been at this for 25 years.
And the district will also be participating. So Meg will have to approve everything that ends up happening. If she decides she doesn't like the rates, she can shut it down at that point. So it's not completely in our hands. The district is fully involved.
And if we don't like the rates, we don't do the deal. And that's one of the advantages of a negotiated sale. We go to the market, something happens in Afghanistan, something happens in Boston, all of a sudden, the market's off. We don't do the sale, we just wait. In a competitive sale, it's hard to do that, to pull back on that day. Underwriters don't like it, because then they have to look at it again, and they're fussy individuals.
Is it the underwriter's goal in a negotiated sale, to basically have them all pre-sold the day they come on the market?
It didn't used to be that way, but it is now.
So they want them priced so they can sell them in advance, so they don't lose any money the day of sale, and make the most money they can on the day of sale. And so they have one goal, we have a different goal.
Of course.
We don't care if they ever sell them, if they buy them from us. And we get the price we want. If they take a loss, that's their problem.
I think I referred to it in the past as what I call a natural antagonism. You want the lowest price, you want the highest price, so they want the lowest price.
That brings us to the premium.
Okay. Do you remember the definition of premium? Premium, all right? Premium is a, is a, a higher is a dollar price. Every bond has a face value of $1,000. When you sell a bond at $1,000, that's what you're going to get, is $1,000. So if you have a, and I have to use an example, a bond with a 4% coupon and a 4% yield, you will get $1,000. When the yield is higher than the coupon, and the yield is your rate of return, you will have a premium. That's just, it's how the mathematics work, it's pretty simple. So if you have a 4% coupon and you have a 3.5% yield, your dollar price will be 105, $1,050. That $50, anything over $1,000 is a premium. Premiums are generated for a number of reasons. In school districts, for them to be able to obtain all of their bond proceeds, you sell $20 million of the bonds, you want $20 million. You'd like to generate enough premium to pay for the costs. Otherwise, those costs come out of your bond proceeds. So you don't get 20 million, you get 19, 19,800,000. So that's the basic concept. Couponing is controlled by the marketplace. And I think we talked about this once before, different investors have different interests. Retail customers, people like us, moms and pops, as they call them, like to buy bonds that are around 1,000. They don't want to buy a bond that's 115. They don't want to pay a lot over 1,000. But there are many institutions, and if you have enough bonds in your deal, which we will this time, because it's about 55 million, then they say they want a higher coupon because they have other issues to deal with that are more complicated, called duration, and there are a lot of terms in portfolio management. So they ask for 5% coupons. So if someone presented us to the point, Mr. Heron's point, that we would have all 5% coupons, that would be totally unacceptable. Now, if, because we know, when you look, and we see, we do deals every week, so we're always pricing deals, so we see what's being sold and who's buying it. That's part of what we do, we absorb on a daily basis. So as Chris said, 2% in the front, short end, 2%, 3%, then get out to 4, then maybe they may have a 5 in there, because the years between 2017 to 2025, there's very little market for it right now. So you look at any bond sale, and I can give Ms. Jete examples of this, and you'll see, that's where you'll see your 5% coupons, because they've got to get somebody incentivized to buy those bonds and say, "Oh, I'll buy those bonds at a 5% coupon." So it becomes a factor of the market. You can't, if you start dictating, "We have to have all 4% coupons," they're going to give you a lower dollar price. It's going to come, it's going to come out in your interest rate one way or the other. It just depends on which way's going to be the best for you. Okay?
Can we show those two charts?
The coupon rates?
Yeah.
Yes, we have those here. And just to remind everyone that the premium does go back toward, to the taxpayers to help pay off the debt.
Right. The rule, the statutory law is that anything over, anything left over after paying cost of issuance goes to the debt service fund, which is used to pay the debt service on the bonds.
What is better, a higher premium or a lesser premium with the taxpayers paying less interest? If you have a spread, if that spread is as small as possible with minimum premium, the interest rate would be, the coupon rates would be lower.
Yeah, that's ideal. And that's what we strive for, yes.
And so if you had a small premium, the interest rate, coupon rates would be less, and therefore, the taxpayers get the interest reduction, whereas the premium just goes against the tax rate and may last for a little bit of time, but not 25 years.
Well, you say like the 2023s, all right, they're 4% coupons, and the yield is a 280, and your dollar price is, now that's an apparent amount, you have to add a zero, you have to move it over one. It's $1,100. That's a pretty high premium. But 4% coupon isn't very much.
My two questions on this.
I'm sorry.
My two questions, in this high school district, there are no 5s. And the premium is a million six or million seven, somewhere in that range. So no 5s, million six premium for 35 million dollars. Now, the second one for the elementary district that I saw...
Is yours?
Has eight years of 5%. And for 20 million, it has a million eight premium. Why does a lesser amount have a greater premium, and why are there 5s on this chart and no 5s on the secondary?
Well, first of all, they are preliminary. And like I said earlier, they're padded, so they are a little conservative already. Part of the reason there's a difference between the number of 4s and 5s in the two is because we are trying to generate a certain amount of premium to cover the first few years' worth of interest. And the reason is because if you went back on our presentation earlier that had the tax rate graph, if you'll see the capacity, the space where we would be issuing the new bonds, is pretty skinny in the first few years, to where it's harder to pay for those first few years of interest. So we're generating 5s here to cover those first few years of interest out of premium. And you are allowed to do that under bond law up to three years or six semi-annual interest payment dates. So that's what we are trying to do here with the elementary. With the high school, we don't need to do that as much. They have a little bit more capacity in the beginning to pay interest without having to fund up as much of a debt service fund.
But if we have, okay, I understand, that's good, that's very good. But if we have, if, speaking for myself, have a goal of keeping the premium to a minimum, can you help control that?
Sure.
We can do our best. It's, like Joanna said, a lot of it is investor demand. And since we are trying to fund up a debt service fund to pay for those first few years of interest, we don't necessarily want to limit the premium, because then you'd be going over the, you'd be going up above the tax rate estimates that we gave you. So the tax rate would be higher, and then you would dip back to where we'd wanted it. So it wouldn't be as even without that debt service fund. But certainly something we can look at. And once we get an estimate from an underwriter, we can get a better scale and see what it would look like. Because these are estimates that...
So you're building into your equation a premium to keep the tax rate down the first few years?
Right.
I hadn't heard that before, so I appreciate that. That helps explain a little bit. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Ms. Idelson?
I have a question. How does it work then, as far as if the bonds are voted on to release them and then the funds come back to the district? Then when these improvements are being made, is it all in an account, or is it, you know, where is the money, basically?
Yes, it comes to the district office, and we have it in Fund 23, 24. I believe those are the fund numbers, and between elementary and high school. And once those projects are put through the requisition process and started to pay out, then they come out of those funds.
So is it earning interest?
It's earning interest at the treasury, and we get that interest.
Okay. So, and that's all worked into this?
So technically, what happens is the money goes to the county, because they are the caretaker of all your funds. And it goes into a building fund. And every bond issue has a separate building fund. That's in, that'll be in the official statement, as you will see it, all right? And then those monies are accessible to the district as they draw on them. So that's the technical line.
But the interest rate does not go towards our debt service. The interest rate goes to our projects.
Projects, right? That they earn on the county, on the county money.
And all of it goes to the bond oversight committees.
That's correct.
They see it all.
Okay. Thank you.
And do we have limitations on how fast we have to spend the 55 million?
Yes.
And can you tell us what the limitations are?
I believe that we have to have the money encumbered within three years.
Three years. 80% within three years. And that includes, like, contracts. I mean, you've let the contracts, you may not have started, but it's 80% within three years.
And we'll have no problem doing that?
I don't think so.
No, not with the amount of projects we have on the list, no.
Ms. Parker?
Well, just following up on that, I mean, I could see issues if we go ahead and vote on a project list, and then two years in, we're having issues with DSA, which is completely possible. And then, you know, this list that we voted on, it'll turn out that we have to bring something else in. So I do see that there could be just surprises when it comes to that three-year point.
We can always count on surprises from the Division of the State Department.
Board, any additional questions or comments? We do have to approve...
Three out of the five.
Three out of the five resolutions.
Would you like Ms. Jete to go over them again?
Well, the refunding, can you just go through the refunding numbers?
Sure, we do have the refunding numbers, and we have a spreadsheet on that.
Refunding is simply taking outstanding bonds and calling them and issuing them at lower rates, which is good, because that reduces taxpayer, you know, taxpayer dollars. So you can go on to the next. All right, so this is a summary of the refunding. We're looking at the 2005 bonds from Measure V, right? That's right.
2000.
2000 Measure V.
2000 Measure V, yeah, it's Measure V, though. And they were issued in 2005. They're callable in 2015. On the right-hand side, the debt service savings, that's very important, it's over a million one. And again, these are conservative numbers. Your present value savings is 5.95%. The benchmark is 3%. And again, these are conservative. We've been really seeing a lot better numbers in this, but we just like to be conservative refundings because they are very market-sensitive. And we have, you know, anticipated interest rates of the refunding minus 3.06. You can see it's been dropping over 1% because rates are so incredibly low right now. These are, as I said, market-sensitive, so if the market moves, if the market gets to be unfriendly, we would not do this. That's part of the deal. We wait, there's no reason to do it. Even if you approve the resolution, it may not happen. It's market-sensitive. So if you, nothing below 3%. I mean, if we got to 3%, then we'd be talking about not doing this. At 4%, we may not do it. So it's a discussion of what, you know, what is most prudent. One of the things that's hard, I think, for boards to understand or think about is that, well, if we don't do this now, why don't we do it next year? Well, to your question, what are interests going to be next year? going to be next year? I'm sort of happy about this year, but I'm not so sure about next year. I'm not even sure about December, but, so that's what you have to think about when you're, when you're doing, when you're thinking about a refunding, is is this the prudent time to do it? Is this the best time to do it? And we have been making recommendations to most of our clients that this is the time to do it. Your call date is not too far away, and I don't think by 2015, when you could still be calling them, I'm not sure interest rates are going to be, I'm not sure the government bonds are going to be, you know, with 1%, 1% handles on them, so.
And so we're not extending anything that we have now longer than they are?
Against the law, against the law.
Against the law, I take that. Okay, and so, okay.
If I could go ahead and get that one off the table, I'd move to approve 2012 slash 2013 dash 50.
I second.
All right. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Now, this gets a little tricky. How would you like to proceed with this?
I'll make another motion.
Okay.
That we not consider any of the resolutions that have cabs or convertibles, or combination of CIBs and any of those. Get those two resolutions out of the way.
Okay.
I'll move that we not consider those.
Okay, so that would be Resolution 2012-13-48, and 2012-2013-46. The ones still left on the table are 2012-13-47, and 2012-2013-49.
Do we have a second for that?
This is to not consider the resolutions ending with 46 and 48s, which include cabs?
I'll second that.
Okay, any additional discussion?
Well, I guess then we have to have the discussion now around this one. I mean, I think that I'll vote yes on this, but I just want to be clear, because this was, this is the one where essentially, if we were to pass these two resolutions, taxpayers in the long run would end up paying about 16 million more.
Yes.
And, but, you know, in the short run, on a yearly basis, they would have lower payments that they're making on their property tax bills to, to the county tax.
Right, on their property taxes.
On the property taxes. But, I mean, I, I think, I personally, I mean, I, I look at the long term, and I think it's the right thing to do, to make sure that in the long run, taxpayers are paying less for the projects that we have. I just want to be sure that, that they are aware, then, that we, that we, you know, put it out there, that on an annual basis, they will pay more in order to pay less in the long run.
Mr. Herron?
I'll answer that one simple. If anybody would think we should borrow $474,000 and pay back $4,006,000, they've got to be crazy. And I would never in the millions of years vote for that. If I had known that in 2010, I wouldn't have voted for that then, because that's exactly what we did then, and did it again in 2012. It was just unbelievable that we did that. And when I say "we," I'm not talking about all of my people here. There are very many people here.
I was here.
I would agree with Mr. Herron on this point. I mean, I have to look at it in terms of, not only the long term, but I look at it as a community. We are, we have to look at it as a community, not individuals right now, who, yes, they will see a tax increase, but overall, as a community, how we're, how we're going about and approaching this in terms of our long-term community debt. I think it's really critical that we look at that lower number and not the, definitely not the higher number, as Mr. Herron has pointed out.
Any additional comments? All right, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of not supporting measures ending, resolutions ending with 46, 48, that include the cabs and convertible, the mix, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes 5-0. So that leaves us with all CIBs, which is 47, and, the resolutions ending with 47 and 49.
And I'll move to approve Resolutions 2012 slash 2013 dash 47 and dash 49.
Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll make the motion, or second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Herron?
Yeah, I, I gave my dissertation two minutes ago. I won't go through that all again, but I've given this tremendous thought since that time. I'm sorry there wasn't more community exposure to the issue. I've seen one article, I think in News Hawk, that had to do with hope, but included us also. So I don't think the community has heard about this potential of raising the tax rate. They're going to hear about it in the headlines tomorrow, I'm sure. And, you know, but I guess, I, I just need to apologize to all the supporters of the bond issue back in 2010, and everybody who worked so hard to pass it, totally understanding that we promised the voters a certain thing, whether we intended to or not, we did. I'd be the first to admit, I did not know enough details about what we did. I didn't know it was a 40-year situation. I didn't know it was based upon 4%. I didn't know the difference between a CIB and a cab and a convertible. The tax election was issued as a no-tax rate increase, and that's our advisors' words. And I didn't know the timing was to sell some bonds in 2012, and some bonds in 2015, and some time, bonds in 2021. I knew a little bit about the 15 number with correspondence, but I never, it never sunk in the magnitude of that and how all new people at the district would react differently to those assumptions back in 2010. People, I guess we all have short memories. And then if you, we got a whole new, everybody here is new practically, that was, they weren't involved in this. So I just apologized to everybody who we told certain things to and who worked so hard for us. I hope it doesn't hurt any future need. Okay, we're going to have to go back, obviously, from what we told tonight, we're going to have to go back to the voters again for more bonds at some point. And I just apologize in advance and hope that they don't hold the next board, who makes those decisions, hold this against them, because they weren't involved, most people here weren't involved. And I'm going to support it. I think we need it. I think it's the practical way to go. Property owners are going to pay a little bit more, but our schools obviously need the work, need the improvements. Our kids deserve it, and we're going to have to just suck it up and deal with the voters as we go forward. I appreciate the fact that they support us, and I think they will in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Herron. Dr. Puss?
I wanted to actually let Mr. Herron know that actually today in News Hawk, there was an article about us discussing this tonight.
I didn't read News Hawk.
So that was out there today. That doesn't necessarily, I agree with you, that doesn't necessarily suffice to getting the word out to have more input and community engagement in this process. I certainly have heard different things on my own in terms of other people approaching me and talking to me about it, and what are you going to do? And so I think it's really critically important at this point in time, is that we can only make a decision right now at this point in time, based on the information that was presented. And likewise, I think at that point in time, for you as a board member, you had a certain amount of information that was presented, and that's your decision at that point in time. Likewise, I think this board is taking a lot of care in making this decision, and making sure we are being good stewards of public money, and making sure that we can do our best at this point in time, given all the information, to make sure that we are not putting undue tax burden on taxpayers in the future. And I think that's critically important, but I think we're really sensitive about that, and trying to also realize that if we don't pass some of these tonight, we may have even a higher burden that we're going to place on our taxpayers in the future, because we cannot continue to have schools that have so many needs and pay for them at a higher rate later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Puss. Ms. Idelson?
Yes. I think, given that the conservative route was taken back when those bonds were issued, and then the public had use of their own money, that, you know, that that money was not spent, I think makes this, makes sense of this as far as, you know, issuing the bonds at this point at what the market is allowing. So, you know, I think the public is aware of that, and then our needs for the schools, we're very aware of, of course, given these long lists. So I'm in favor of it. I think this is truly what people in this community want to see, is our schools being maintained and improved on over the years, and that's why the bonds were, were passed and voted on. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I will add that I think one of the things that I've learned on the time that I've been on the board, that there's those things that we have control over and those things that we don't have control over. So this process has reminded me that we don't have control over the tax rate, but we do have control as how we, how we move forward and what we communicate to our constituents, to the public. And I know that our students aren't taxpayers yet, but they have their own burden that they're paying by being in classrooms and on schools where the facility needs are so great. And so for me, I really had to balance with, how do you maintain the responsibility and commitment to being fiscally prudent, but also understand that those that are in the classroom don't have a vote in this? And some would say, look, it's going to cost you less in 2013 than waiting another 15 years before you renovate X building, or whether you do this. And I think our students have, and actually cohorts and generations of students have, I mean, from what we've seen, I remember some of those portables.
You were probably.
Yeah. It's like, I remember when Cleveland got their first portable. And so I, I think it's important to consider that, to consider that, you know, we really do have compelling interest. And this isn't that one is more compelling than the other, but I think it's important to consider that. So I am in support of those, of these resolutions, and I'm also in agreement that moving forward and saving the taxpayer $16 million is the right thing to do. So, yeah, thank you. With that, I will call for the vote. And just as a reminder, Ms. Parker has made the motion, and Mr., Dr. Puss has seconded the motion. All those in favor of approving Resolutions 2012 slash 2013 dash 47, and 2012 slash 2013 dash 49, which do not include cabs or convertibles, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. I have one question.
Yes.
June or August?
July. Yeah, I was going to say, actually, we'll wait and get the best deal possible.
Thank you. Yes. And I will let Mr. Price know at the county that we have been approved. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to also thank everyone that's been involved, Ms. Bose, Mr. Price, Ms. Earhart, because I think it's been a much-needed discussion, and we had to get into some of the details. So I thank you for your time, and Mr. Price's time, and everyone that's worked with us to have this discussion and get us to the point where we can move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I also do want to, actually, I will accept the recommendation that maybe we have some follow-up in the process, and before you sell the bonds, we get updates. I think that that's a great suggestion. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now moving on to approval of priority list number two of Measures Q's 2010 Bond Fund Projects. Ms. Jete?
I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Penney.
Thank you, board members. And I've now been educated, too. I probably know more about bonds and bond issues and different types of bonds than I ever did. And so, well, thank you for asking all the questions, because I've, I've learned along with everybody else. It's fantastic. The Measure Q list that we talked about in the conference agenda is now up for your review and comments about what priorities you think should be there. These are our recommendations. Is there anything on this list that you think should come off, that maybe is not that high a priority, something else on the list that you think should come on? Do you want to approve all of the list, all the list except a couple of items? It's totally up to you, what direction we go on this point.
Thank you, Mr. Hank. Board, Dr. Puss?
I had a question about Santa Barbara, the high school stadium, in terms of if we were to take that off the list, just hear me out, what fiscal impact would that have for our district?
Yeah, if you took it off the list and assigned the money to something else...
I would say not, not...
No, just to just take it off the list.
Yeah.
It'd probably have no impact if we didn't replace it with something else, because we need to come back to you with additional information before we move forward with anything. Right now, we're going through the process of doing our assessments and getting Division of State Architect and Office of Public School Construction to agree that this qualifies as a structural hardship project that they will give funding for. Then you have to do an analysis once they do that. Correct me if I'm right in my sequencing here, Kelly. They will determine what the cost for replacement is, what the cost for renovation would be. And I don't know if it's possible to renovate it without replacing it, but they will analyze those factors, and they will tell us how much funds they would furnish the district for this project. Then we would come back to you, the board, and say, the state's going to give X amount of money towards the project of refurbishing or replacing Peabody Stadium at Santa Barbara High School. We'll have a discussion and take direction from the board of what next step you'd like us to take.
I just, I'm asking that question because of Mr. Herron's comments earlier on about having a discussion of if that was to move forward, you know, that stadium has been around forever today.
If you approved everything on this list today, that's the thing we wouldn't be able to move forward with until we finish that process of the assessment by Division of State Architect and the state.
It's more of a recognition that that is a priority for these funds, with all the caveats you've heard. I mean, we, we have, we have potential for a significant contribution from the state, as well as a contribution from alumni who are very interested in the project, so.
If you approved this list, we would be bringing back architects and engineering assignments for the projects that don't have them right away, but that would be one that we wouldn't, because we're still doing an investigation. We wouldn't be able to make a recommendation for you. If we signed it to somebody, they wouldn't have anything to do yet.
Plus, I want to make it clear that if there is a list of projects that are approved, we'll finally be able to answer Mr. Herron's question, which is, what are we not going to do if we approve this tonight? Because we will keep a running list. These are our estimates, best upon, based upon what we think. Those estimates will, could change, and that we'll be able to bring forward a running list. You know, these were the projects that were approved. This one cost $500,000 less than what we, we had proposed in May 2013, or a half a million dollars more. And then when, when we are still bringing it forward, Mr. Herron will ask, well, what do we, if we approve this, what are we not going to do? And we'll then be able to actually give a recommendation. Well, this means that we're not going to do whatever the, it is, because it's on the list.
And hopefully, things turn out perfectly, and we can add something to the list.
Right, yeah.
Because we do, we do have contingencies in here, and we think we're conservative. We're not, I think we're, we believe that what we're presenting to you is very realistic and conservative.
Ms. Idelson?
I have a question. On the DP showers and locker rooms, I know on the junior high, at least Santa Barbara Junior High, the kids don't use the showers. I'm curious, is that something that is in full use if all is working well at the high school level?
High schools use the showers, and definitely the locker rooms, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and are they fully functional now?
No.
They are not.
Okay. Is that true of the three high schools, or does that...
Not to pick on DP.
I think, no. I think the DP showers have been on a list for, we have, I'm looking at Mr. Branish, because he's the facilities expert at Dos Pueblos.
Okay.
But have probably been on a list for decades.
I have to remind you from Mr. Gary.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you go to the microphone so they can capture the sound? Thank you.
Come on, Larry. That's okay. Thank you. Larry Branish. We do have functioning showers as of a renovation, internal renovation project four years ago, three years ago, as part of the pool and part of the ADA compliance, which is a bonus in modernization in many classrooms that grew out of that rather, at times, financially onerous thing. The main, the main shower room is really not operative, and I believe we do have some codes that require we have showers per square foot. There are experts here that can help you with that, but that's the extent. There is a team room that's shared by a number of the teams that, because of some work that was done currently on modernization within the last year or so, those two stands of showers, I believe, which total eight, are now functional with the proper accoutrements in the ceiling. What's been done would be a prototype, I believe, for what you would hope to do with the rest of that, for all of the students, and many of them, if not most, do our students in our PE classes.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add that having used those as an athlete at DP, yeah, even at that point in time was definitely needed.
And we would hope to improve things like supervision sightlines. I can tell you that we did do a major renovation of the girls' locker room when we did the pool at Santa Barbara High School. The field house also needs work, but I don't believe it's as bad as Dos Pueblos. And San Marcos had some work done as far as their locker room renovations under Measure V, so they're, they're...
Thank you.
Better off.
And I, I had two things on this list that I'm actually not sure about, which are the DP field, because I understand we're getting a presentation about that at the May 14 meeting, and the Santa Barbara High School Peabody Stadium. I think those are two items that need additional information that we need to have a discussion about. So what I'm not comfortable with is saying, yes, they are a priority, because I don't have any information that tells me that they are. And I know at least one of those projects, well, now it sounds like both of those projects also come with potential alumni support or funding. So I would... So I would actually feel more comfortable if those two items were not on today's list. I'm not saying that we should then go back and put them on the list, but I would want more information about those before we actually officially vote, yes, they are a priority. So those are my two comments on those.
And your proposal would be just to not list them on the list for now and have the bottom line increase in dollars?
And then once, I mean, one of them's coming back to us on Tuesday. So if after the discussion, there's additional information and the board feels, yes, let's move forward on it, then it just goes back on here on the priority list. But I think that those two items, at least for me, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, at least for me, require more information. And it sounds like we're going to get more information, but we don't have it at this time of saying, of, you know, putting the stamp of approval that, yes, they are a priority.
I would like to spend a little bit of consulting money on the Peabody Stadium to finish the process that we've started as far as the structural engineer having to respond to any questions from DSA or OPSC about the structural conditions in the report they did, just nominal amounts of money that we would spend during the investigative stage, but nothing beyond that.
Mr. Herron?
I have no problem with them being on there. I think Peabody Stadium, I think, is out of our hands to some degree. It's, I mean, I, well, I'm not gonna get into the details, but it's gotta, something's gotta be done to it. It can't go on, it can't go on. And I, my objection is that when I asked the question, "What does it mean?", Kelly added the word "tear it down" and "put in aluminum bleachers." And I guess that feature is in that number. And so if anybody, when we're not around anymore, somebody looks at that number and they go back to the documentation, they say, "Oh, we're gonna tear it down and put in metal bleachers." I don't want that interpretation attached to that number. So if there's some way to asteric it or take out the word "modernization" and just have Peabody Stadium for discussion, and so it doesn't relate back to tearing it down and putting in bleachers.
Okay.
Maybe the easiest thing is to take the dollar amount out and just have it listed as a priority.
That'd be fine with me.
Okay.
Ms. Parker?
And on that, those particular issues that Mr. Limone and Mr. Herron are talking about, I think that that sounds okay too, just to have them on as a priority, but to...
Leave them, just something, even an asterisk, just whatever we want to do to just know that we need to talk about them.
We need further information on that. I guess my question is, both for this list and for the next list, I mean, essentially what we have up here is a list that's in alphabetical order. And even within this, I guess, one of my questions is, are you just planning, if we were to approve this list, are you just planning to do the projects as approval came through?
The plan with the, if the lists are approved is to, we will have to create a program, which would be fairly specific in detail. That would give you the length of time, that would be anticipated to complete the projects, like when we'd go out for bid, when we'd finish the design process. And we would want to give you a framework for all of them so that you would know, because it'll, the experts in the room will have to sequence it according to what makes sense to do what first. Some of them may be combined because there'll be the same systems that would be addressed and so it may make sense to do it in that manner. But that kind of detail would be, would be brought, explained to you in either a conference matter or, I don't know if you need to approve that thing, but that information would come forward after the priority list is developed or approved.
And Dr. Cash, you talked about a running total.
Yes.
And, you know, my concern is, of course, that historically, our estimates, they tend to, we tend to have cost overruns and I think that that's fairly typical in the construction field. And we've seen, we've had so many situations where the money's been eaten away without us paying close enough attention. And so if you're talking about a running total, I really feel that this board needs to monitor it so much more closely than we have in the past and that we need to see, you know, a spreadsheet on this on a monthly basis, even if there are no changes, just so that we're looking at this at a monthly board brief or something, so that we, we really do know when, if it's not something, you know, there may be surprises, emergencies that come in from off the list, that, you know, we really need to have an intense discussion about what we're gonna boot off the priority list because of it. But also, you know, anything that's on the list, I don't want it just because the DSA approval has come forward first on this project and that has, you know, had cost overruns, that therefore this other thing that was on this list, you know, which is going to be profoundly important to, you know, this other school community, that that gets knocked off without us really knowing that, without communicating that to that school site. I just feel, just even having seen what's happened in the past two years since these bonds were passed, that we need to be monitoring this at the board level much more closely.
And one of the great features of the report that Telecu did is if you drill down in there, you'll see the line item that should be the contract award. And if that contract award is above that individual line item within that budget, then we would discuss that as we bring something to the board and say, you know, this is part of the, of our recommendation of approval. It's $300,000 under budget, it's $400,000 over budget. That would be part of discussion anytime we brought something forward to approval so you'd know what effect it would have on other projects and you may choose to wait with that project, you may choose to go ahead with that project, but those would be adjustments. And then it, you know, definitely, we'd like to have Telecu commute, create a master schedule and then that would be a great way of keeping the board informed of where we are on all these projects.
And I'd also like to see, you know, every time that we have an expense that's coming beyond the original contract amount, I'd like to see that plugged back into the spreadsheet so that it's not just something that we're approving on a, you know, case-by-case basis as they come through. I want to see how that's affecting the entire amount for the bonds every single time.
Well, the purpose, the rationale for doing what we've done is that we hadn't done it before and we didn't have a facilities assessment. I mean, when I got asked the questions here at the board table, why are we doing this or why is this coming forward or should we do, for example, photovoltaics at San Marcos High School, a great question, I don't remember who asked it, was, "Well, is this, we're replacing the roof, is this our worst roof? Is this where we should be spending our money on replacing a roof?" I think, I hope that you believe that you're gonna be getting a lot more detail than you might have previously in relationship to these projects. And having it organized in a fashion like we've started clearly is gonna give you, I believe, a lot more information.
And I've made an out of it, Ms. Parker. Ms., I think Dr. Bass and then Mr. Herron.
I would completely agree with my board colleague, Ms. Parker, in terms of making sure we're informing not only the board, but, you know, and through that process, the community, because some of these items that we have up here have much more emotional tie, you know, some of these do not. HVAC replacement, I don't think we're gonna get a roomful of parents coming in here saying, "You better put that in there because my child's overheating." The stadium...
You might be surprised, Dr. Bass, I believe that's happening.
You might have my wife, because she works in a room that's a little hot, but...
Had a lot of calls last winter with cold rooms.
But I think, my point is that you might well have a lot of people coming in talking about Peabody Stadium. So I think that, given that, we do need to be aware of how the dominoes are falling and how one project will affect another is really critically important, I think, for all of us, because we are making that kind of community commitment. This is a list that we are saying is a priority to our community. I think it's really critically important that we try to adhere to it as much as possible and hopefully, you know, being optimistic, we get all of this and maybe something else is a bonus, if, I'm being extremely optimistic. So I think it's really important that we do have that as a running total and we have a sense of what's happening, because some of these on this list, I have already been approached. What are we doing about this? Where are we in the priority list? When is it gonna happen? I'd love to have answers for people when they have that kind of question come to me as a board member and I'm out and about visiting one of our schools, so that would be really important for me. Thank you.
I'm gonna make a comical comment, I think. I do find it interesting that we found a new procedure to get around your procedures by putting something on the conference agenda and then immediately putting it on the action agenda. We delayed approving a course for San Marcos for teachers and yet now we're gonna approve $55 million in one session. I just find that interesting. And I guess I also find it interesting that I did ask the principal today, I was at a couple of schools, had she compared the list of what we're gonna do at the school versus what we're not gonna do at school and had not seen the list. So I just, I do question whether or not this list has these two lists, the list we're gonna do and the list that we're not gonna do. If the principals have had a chance to compare the two lists and say, gee, like you talked, you said you talked to a couple of principals and they said, "Wait, this is what we want to do, not this." And I think that's valuable. I hope we don't get feedback now that we approve this.
I've met with every principal at every site, except three, to discuss their top priorities, discuss upcoming bond projects and site tour, if anything they wish me to see on the site, so I've...
That was passed, though.
No, no.
No, 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 no. I'm telling you, we're gonna last two months.
Oh, I thought I asked that question and I thought you said the original concept, you did that, and recently you've done it for a few.
Yeah, I did not take the principal's specific list and say, "We're doing these three things." They were general topics about what's coming up on their bond as far as what our priorities were. I didn't actually show them the list.
Okay. And so, I just made that interesting comment on procedure.
Thank you, Mr. Herron. Ms. Edelson?
Yes, I had a question. I witnessed the La Colina parking lot last summer. Major, you know, dug it all up, redid it. Are these asphalt replacements similar? I mean, major equipment, major, I mean, very...
For the most part, yes. At Santa Barbara Junior High School, we have, you will see major equipment in there doing the removal of the existing asphalt. Call, correct if I'm wrong, I believe that we're doing some drainage remediation in there at the same time, which will mean, kinda like at La Colina and Dos Pueblos, a staff parking lot, there'll be equipment in there and we'll redo some grades.
So that would be during the summer?
It'd be during, that'd be a summer project, as would our whiffing projects be during the summer. So we would gear up right away, once this list was approved, of getting engineers and architects and consultants onboard with designs.
Dr. Bass, did you want to...
I'd just like to move that we approved priority list number two of Measure Q 2010 Bond Fund Projects.
I'll second that, Dr. Bass, with the understanding that that's with the minor changes about the Dos Pueblos field and Peabody...
The clarity part.
The clarity piece.
I would agree.
Second.
All right, any additional discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. All right, we are now on to item C3, approval priority list number two of Measure R Bond Fund Projects.
I can alternate if you wish between the list for funds on hand and the list for proposed sale, if you want to go over one of them first. Because we, the list that you saw earlier with option, Phase One, Option One or Option Two, Option One was the small library, Option Two was the bottom of the list. Did you want to visit the bottom of that list before you talk about this list?
I remember that list from last time. I personally don't feel the need to see that again, but, I mean, I will share that right off the bat, and I think that Option Two is the one that we should go for.
And the top of this list that you're approving says Phase One, Option Two. So if you approve...
That was our, that was our recommendation.
So we're recommending the bottom half of that list as Option Two and then, and then the remaining projects here, which should include full-size libraries.
Mr. Herron?
And just to be clear, everything that was on the list a month ago that we postponed is on this list, correct?
It's on the Phase Two, Option, Phase One, Option Two, yes.
We didn't leave anything off. You didn't come up with something that...
No, that's...
No, we didn't switch anything out.
Okay, so this is, this is the list that we had on the table before, plus other things to spend $20 million.
Yeah, the list you had on the table before was to spend the remaining funds on hand and this list is to spend the $20 million.
It's both. This, this, this recommendation assumes that you will approve Phase, the Option Two for Phase One.
Set at the top.
It says Phase One, remaining balance forwarded. So we need to know where the list is for Phase One.
That was page 61 or 62.
Right, it's, so the approval of this is the assumption that we're not building a small library.
Right, yes.
We're going forward with the other list. Does that helpful?
Yeah, just so we, yeah, we didn't leave anything...
No, no.
But the actual remaining available funds is...
But that other list had things on there, like the auto-luncheon restroom.
Right, they're not on this list.
They're not on here, but they're on, they're on the Option Two list.
Yes, right.
But that option, Phase One, Option Two addresses 4.689821 in terms of actual remaining available funds from the first sale of the bond.
Right, and this list represents the next 20.
The next one, okay.
All right, board, comments, questions, discussion? Ms. Parker?
Just a couple of things. One is on the Adams Library Replacement and Replace Portables Phase One. Does that, I know that that is talking about pulling out the rooms, when you're pulling out the portables and putting in new portables to house kids while you're building the library. But does this also address pulling out the portables that are where the current library is?
Yes, but no funds to replace them with the new building.
So how, what is the district thinking about that in terms of, you're gonna tear those out, but actually not have funds lined up to build permanent classrooms?
The people that are in that will move into the new library building and you already have your other portables there for interim housing that would stay while, hopefully for a future bond issue campaign, a building was built to replace in other portables as well as that, for those four modulators. But the question is, would we rather have the newer portables that are there for interim housing and have students in there or have them in that old four quad building, which I really don't want to maintain anymore or deal with, with issues of age and everything else that's associated with that? I think we'd better just demolish it. And then we have the housing of the portables that are newer, if I could use that term there, for the students in the meantime. And then the replacement of that building would definitely be the Phase Three capital campaign.
Okay. And then my other question is, there's a lot of playgrounds on, play equipment on this list, and that doesn't require DSA approval.
It goes through DSA review for access compliance. However, the equipment itself is pre-DSA approved. So all they're gonna be, it's an over-the-counter approval for access. Show the dots how the kids get there.
Quick process. What is your timeline for putting all these playgrounds replacements in?
Well, that's gonna be part of the master schedule that we would bring forward.
Yeah, but that can be done fairly quickly.
Okay. And... I'll go ahead and put it on the table then. I'll move to approve this priority list number two for Measure R 2010 Bond Funds and then also the Phase One, Option Two.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Discussion.
Just a related question on Washington. Have we set aside, or do we need to set aside any more money for any air quality issues at Washington? Is that issue still on the table or have we got money if we need it for that?
On the board meeting of the 14th, there's gonna be an agenda item for, is it the 14th or 28th? Dave, wanna go? For the flooring?
14.
Okay. For the flooring, we'll have an agenda item to replace the flooring using developer fee funds for reconstruction. And that project was, we rejected all bids a while back because of the, doing them one at a time and we expect savings from doing them all together. And then we're gonna spend a little bit more money from that savings for that project to have our HVAC modified to shoot some air up in, above the ceiling to help with airflow up there to offset condensation, because on some of those portables, it's very difficult to put in a roof vent. It's a lot easier just to take that little bit of the HVAC, so every time the students are in the classroom and the fan is running, it also blows air up in there. And all we need to do is prevent condensation up there to prevent future mold. So that flooring would all be done, be done for all the portables, except the child development portable, which has new half-carpet, half-flooring.
So we have funds available to do anything that still might be required at Washington?
We're recommending developer fees for... We're recommending developer fees for this last project out there, the last project that I know of.
Thank you.
I just want to add, I think, to Mr. Herron's comment that he made about what our community knows and what they understand, and their ability to input. I was at a parent meeting, I think it was Wednesday of last week, where I spoke to Harding and McKinley parents, and it was very clear that they had heard rumors of this facilities list, but there was really no explanation. So I really want the district to think about the messaging around this, because we've spent hours discussing this, and so I don't think our community knows this, but our community is, is going to see that one school is getting X and the other school is getting Y, and they're not going to be equal. And they're also not going to make the campuses equitable. I understand, we don't have money to do that right now, but I think it's really important that there is very thoughtful and strategic messaging to the community, because if our teachers and our principals are asking us questions and don't actually get this, and don't know we're voting on this, I also worry that the message to the parents is such that it becomes very confusing for them. And I think that with discussion, it was all cleared up, how this list came about, and why some schools got X, and why some schools got Y. But I would encourage that to happen in some way, and I don't know if that means that we put out an official statement, if we, you know, kind of provide our rationale. I'm not quite sure what that would be, but I would encourage that something happened.
We will do so. And I can assure you that every principal was, has seen the list and was given a summary, and also had access to the CD as well. So they, they've seen it all. That's why several of them were here. I don't know if you saw earlier this evening.
Well, maybe we can just all be on the same page as far as the messaging that goes out to the community.
That's a great idea.
Great.
Any, Mr. Herron?
Just one more comment, because in response to that, too. I've said from day one when we passed the bond, that I wanted us to focus on the highest priority, and do things that have a priority, and not try to be even to everybody. And I think we've accomplished that. You know, I want us to be doing the absolute most important things that we have to do, and I think we've gone through a process to do that, and I for one appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Herron.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Approval of Network Firewall Replacement. Ms. Chatey?
Yes, I'm going to hand this over to Todd, even though, watching his video, I could probably explain this, but I'm going to let him do it anyway.
I learned a lot from your video, Mr....
I'm glad.
I learned something.
My, my wife and I both watched the videos. Great. I'm glad I can provide that kind of entertainment. Thank you. We, as my video points out, and in the documentation I provided you, it's, this job is amazing, what I find out, things I've been wondering my entire 15 years, teaching why things are so slow around here. And the reason is because we have an edge device, which is the firewall that protects our network from intrusion, but also does car content filtering. Everything goes in and out of that, that firewall. And the one we had purchased not too long ago, I think five years ago, is only capable of doing 240 megabytes of speed in and out. The best practice would be, and, and we've confirmed this with Cox Communications, who's helping us redesign the network, is that you put an edge device at each site, and then have them go directly out to the internet rather than how they travel now, which is everybody comes back to the district office and then out the firewall. You know, what we found is, as we've started to really ramp up the network and get our switches configured correctly, is that that has really made the firewall weakness apparent. And I had no idea that it was only 240 megs until I really started to look. I just assumed that no one would ever think to put something like that in place. So my fault for not catching it earlier. But it's a, it's a change that we, we desperately need to make, considering that we've spent so much time, effort, and capital in redoing our network.
Dr. Paus?
Just one quick question. Would, I know that sort of, that in, in the summary sheet, you are citing that it would be a cheaper cost having each site have its own firewall. My question is, would the cost to administer that many pieces of equipment be higher in the long run? No, that's a great question. The, the solution that we're looking at Palo Alto, they actually have a product that allows you to, to manage multiple firewalls from one interface, so you make a change on one, and it pushes it out to all of them. So we don't have to, yeah, that's a great question, no. Thank you.
Mr. Herron?
It doesn't indicate on your document where the funding's coming from.
Yeah, I, I will leave that to Meg.
So, as you know, we had some RDA money come up, and that's one-time funds. So one-time funds on one-time expenditures is a great way to use that money. When, to talk to you about the, how we figure it'll be cheaper, Dr. Paus, is that when something happens, it stops everything right now. So I sit there in my office, and I can't work. I can't get on the internet. I can't get on the shared drives. I sit there and go, how much money is going out the window right now, because no one's working? People are filing, people are making copies. But we lose, we lose productivity on that. So as I always say to Todd, when he comes and asks for money, I say, I don't mind wait, I don't mind spending money, I don't want, I don't want to waste money. So I thought this was a great way of spending one-time funds on one-time expenditures.
I just have a clarification. So if it's one-time money for the RDA, does that mean that that pays for year one and year two, it comes out of general funds? Because there's a year-one fiscal impact and a year-two and beyond?
Well, the...
The year-two and beyond is the maintenance.
The maintenance in service, yeah.
We've already been paying maintenance.
That's, that goes with all firewall purchases. You, their subscription fees, basically. You subscribe, so you buy the device, but then you have to pay maintenance if you want to continue to, to do deep packet inspection. There's a charge for licensing for that, and every firewall company works in that manner.
But the year-one comes out from this one-time money, and from year-two and on, it comes out of...
It's just normal operations.
And I want to, something that Dr. Paus brought up, we're able to save money because we can buy appropriate-sized firewalls for different sites, rather than buying a gigantic one and putting it here, which we would spend a lot of money, but we wouldn't get much bang for our buck because of the issues with infrastructure. Yeah.
I would move to approve our network firewall replacement with a number of network firewall replacements.
Second?
All right. Additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Next, we go on to Approval of Staff Travel Out of State Overnight and/or Excess of $3,000.
I move approval.
Thank you.
I move approval.
Mr. Herron, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Idelson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five zero. Final item on our agenda, Decision Regarding Certificated Reduction in Force and Approval of Resolution Number 2012/13-51. Dr. Christensen.
Yes, thank you, Board, for considering this item tonight. Education Code requires that we notify certificated staff of a reduction in force no later than May 14th, 2013. We had initially thought we could put it on next week's agenda, but when we were told by legal counsel that these reductions in force had to be postmarked on the 14th, that's why this item was added onto this board agenda. So consequently, we recommended the board approve the resolution regarding the reduction in force.
Thank you, Mrs. Christensen. Board, do we have...
I'll move approval.
Thank you, Mr.
But I do want, I do want to ask a question.
Okay.
I'll second it to get it on the table.
When we did this in March, I think it was by the March 15th date, we, we did something similar, I think with the same issue. There was hope that some of these might be hired back at the school sites based upon, not partial tax money, but just the need, or maybe partial tax money, but the need for some of these math teachers. Is that still a possibility?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, hearing no additional discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes five zero. All right, so this concludes the, our May 7th meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.